Welcome, everybody, to the May 7th City Council Meeting. Mr. Smith, will you give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day, please, sir?
Let us pray. Our Father God, we come once again, grateful for all the blessings that have bestowed upon us, and for this opportunity to be servants of your city. Oh, God, we ask that you continue to lead us and guide us and direct our paths, that all that we share do and say pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Blessed are these proceedings in thy son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On May the 7th, nineteen forty-five, the German High Command General Albert Jody signs the unconditional surrender of all German forces, east and west, at Reims in northeastern France. At first, General hoped to limit the terms of German surrender to only those forces still fighting the Western Allies. But General Dwight Eisenhower demanded complete surrender of all German forces through fighting in the east as well as in the west. If this demand was not met, Eisenhower was prepared to seal off the western front, preventing Germans from fleeing to the west in order to surrender, thereby leaving them in the hands of the developing Soviet forces. Fighting would still go on in the east for almost another day, but the war in the west was over. Fact of the day.
All right. We'll read the decorum statement for everybody. Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone, stating your name, dress of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The Council and City staff encourages constructive criticism. However, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audit shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warning, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers. Thank you. All right. Approval of amendments. Any changes not for motion to approve?
Well, I saw on what was uploaded, it's version two or V2 of this. Are we able to get, or if you can, forward a copy of this before we approve these, just so we know what changes occurred? Because it's showing V2 on what's been uploaded. So I'd assume that there's a V1 somewhere. Yes, please. Just to make sure that there's no tangible changes, because we've had this in the past, so I just want to make sure that we're able to review and compare V1 to V2, please. So we can make that, review that prior to approving these.
Okay. Gender review. Bradley?
Yes, Mayor, we have two changes. We need to pull number 11 off consent and put it under business. It'll be item number three for business. I'm sorry. Item number... It'll become item number five for business. And we also need to pull item two from public hearings. Applicants asked to move that to the June 4th council meeting.
Which one was that? I'm sorry, Bradley.
Number two, under public hearings.
Okay.
On the public hearing?
And they've requested to bring it back at the June 4th meeting.
Okay. All right.
And number 11, who said goes to business?
All right. Thank you, Bradley. Okay. First up, first proclamation is National Police Week, National Peace Officers Memorial Day proclamation. And the chief and deputy chief and I got to go down to Orange County on her courts at Orlando, and what a, what a great ceremony. And always an honor to be there and see the, the passion they have for those officers that we've lost. So I appreciate being able to go down with my folks and be a part of that. So anyway, Chief, you want to come on up or Deputy Chief? I'll read the proclamation, then you say a couple of words, please. And the proclamation reads, whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas the people of the state of Florida honor the thousands of men and women of local, state, federal, and tribal law enforcement agencies who made the supreme sacrifice with their lives to protect the freedom of others and preserve this grant, this great nation. And whereas it's fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all people. And whereas there, whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Apopka Police Department. And whereas the members of the Apopka Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the City of Apopka. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including Denson Hudson, a member of the Apopka Police Department, who gave the ultimate sacrifice in nineteen forty-one. And whereas a hundred and forty-seven officers fell in the line of duty in two thousand twenty-four and will be added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this year. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, to call upon all citizens in the City of Apopka to observe the week of May eleventh through the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, as National Police Week, as we commemorate police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so, have established for themselves an enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens to observe May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, to honor those officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners? On behalf of all the members of the Apopka Police Department, all of our fallen officers and all their surviving family members, we thank you for your continued support. We thank the citizens of Apopka, the unwavering support that the Apopka Police Department has and our law enforcement agency has, is unwavering, and we appreciate that. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, residents, and citizens. Thank you for your support. As you all know, this profession is sometimes leads to things such as this. And so we appreciate for the things that you have done and said in this proclamation for those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Let us never forget their families who are still with us and grieving. So thank you again for your support.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and grab a picture. Do you want to have the other? Just have a couple of captains with you? Okay. The next proclamation is for the Florida Emancipation Day proclamation. And I know we've got Pastor Bradford here to accept that proclamation as well. And so this proclamation reads, whereas the City of Apopka recognizes that the observance of the end of slavery is part of history and heritage of the United States and the state of Florida. And whereas a governmental body, the City Council opposes and rejects any form of oppression and supports residents and organizations working to achieve genuine equality and protection of human rights for everyone. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on September twenty-second, eighteen sixty-two, announcing that on the first day of January eighteen sixty-three, all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state, the people whereof shall then be in rebellion against the United States shall be then henceforth and forever free. And whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, federal authorities arrived in Galveston, Texas, and informed slaves that the Civil War had ended and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas June nineteenth or Juneteenth has been commonly recognized and celebrated as the day that slavery ended in the United States. And whereas Emancipation Day in Florida is traditionally celebrated on May twentieth to recognize the emancipation of slaves as proclaimed by General Edward M. McCook from the steps of the Knott House in Tallahassee on May twentieth, eighteen sixty-five, effectively ending slavery in the state of Florida, eleven days after the end of the Civil War and two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was first issued by President Abraham Lincoln. And whereas a result, many Floridians celebrate May twentieth as Emancipation Day in Florida. And whereas in the recognition of Florida's unique history with respect to the emancipation of slaves, the City Council commemorates the announcement of the abolition of slavery and recognizes the significant contributions of African Americans in this state and our nation. And whereas we gather here today on May seventh, two thousand twenty-five, at City Council to honor Emancipation Day. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, do hereby recognize May twentieth as Florida Emancipation Day in the City of Apopka and encourage all citizens to recognize and honor this day in the City of Apopka. With that, Pastor?
Good afternoon, citizens, Mr. Mayor, and all of you beautiful and handsome council members. We gladly appreciate all that you do within our city and our community. As the Vice President in the absence of Pastor Richard King, we gladly accept this proclamation. And we will continue to work in our community to make where we live a better place for all who lives in those areas. We will serve at the, at the honor and gratitude of our members. And again, we want to say thank you to the City of Apopka for all that you do, because we all are in this together. Thank you very much.
And our third proclamation is the proclamation for the Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And I know that our clerk is here, and we got our deputy clerk and our other staff member here with us. So we just want to read the proclamation, because it's a very important job, you know? If you don't have the records right, it can create all kinds of problems. So anyway, the proclamation reads as, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerks throughout participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, county, and international organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, do hereby recognize the week of May fourth through May tenth, two thousand twenty-five, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Susan Bone, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for their vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And with that, Susan?
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for this honor. And I just wanted to say thank you to my staff, my deputy Jody Wrigley, and our new addition, Carolina, Carolina Baez. She's our administrative specialist, and we've got a team of three. We have a lot of things going on in our offices, you know? And we have, there's a lot of people that don't understand what the clerk's office even does. But, but we do appreciate the honor where Jody is working on her certification for FACC and moving forward with that. So we do appreciate the recognition, and thank you.
Thank you. All right. Presentations. Cliff, you're going to do the South Apopka annexation by referendum update.
All right. Mayor, Council, we put together for your reference an outline, a detailed outline of the annexation process. Obviously, this is specifically about the South Apopka area. But the process, which is what the outline covers, is a general process. So any kind of annexation by vote, as opposed to voluntary application by a property owner, this is the way it's done. And so I put together, from the outline, a brief slide presentation, which I understand, if I hit this button, should work. Annexation by referendum, which is what we're talking about now. An overview of annexation by referendum. This is obviously the Apopka area here to the right. And I understand, although I don't have the materials, that the specific area we're talking about of South Apopka has been identified. And obviously, that's going to become relevant for reasons you'll understand. What, what is annexation? Well, again, we've had multiple opportunities to look at annexation from the property owner's standpoint, coming to you and asking to be annexed into the city for various reasons. Sometimes because they, services would be more convenient. Sometimes it's because it's for all kinds of reasons. They like the idea of being in the city and other things of that nature. But this is different. This is where an entire area of people will be given the opportunity by referendum to decide whether they want to join the city. And potentially, potentially, we're going to talk about this, the residents of the City of Apopka will decide whether they want to take the annexation in. That's something we're going to discuss in some detail. The voters residing within the area proposed for annexation vote on whether they want to join the municipality. That's in a referendum. And the law, for those who are looking at this for future reference, is Chapter one seventy-one, Part one, Florida statutes. And those are where the procedures that we're going to go over in these slides are found. Step number one is a feasibility study. Now, again, I say this is step number one, because I have been told that when I say South Apopka, at least this body has decided what that means in terms of what would be annexed. If that's not true, then there would have to be some discussions of where the boundaries would be. So I'm assuming that that's true. The feasibility study assesses the estimated impact of the annexation, including the ability to provide municipal services to the annexed area, which I understand is not an issue in this case, but that's why you do one. Without going into further detail, we have a purchasing policy. Do not know whether it would be applied to the situation, because I don't know how much a feasibility study costs. But if needed, that would mean we would need to get an RFP to get the study done and get that process underway. If not, if it's under the amount that we can spend without that, then we would go into finding who does those kinds of studies and get them on board. Once the study is completed, we file the feasibility study with the county. And we notify the property owners and residents in the area proposed for annexation of upcoming hearings to consider the annexation. The pre-referendum procedure includes two public hearings to allow public input on the proposed annexation. And then, assuming that those go well, we adopt an annexation ordinance, which would not go into effect, even though it's adopted, until approval of the referendum. A unique feature, which I do not know the answer to for South Apopka, is whether or not property owner consent to the annexation is applicable before there's even a vote. And this depends on whether or not greater than seventy percent of the land is owned by non-electors. So if you look at the area to be annexed, and it turns out that more than seventy percent are business owners, not voters, then you would have to go get at least fifty percent of owners of the land to consent to the holding of the referendum. So I don't know if that analysis has been done, but it's something that would need to, need to be understood. If it's less than seventy percent, this step about obtaining property owner consent is unnecessary. The procedure is to hold a referendum in the area proposed to be annexed, in this case, South Apopka. Separate referendum of the annexing municipality is optional. So one of the things you will need to decide at some point is whether you want to have a vote of them and a vote of us, or just a vote of them. If you ask the question, well, why do we have to vote? Or why would we vote? Or why wouldn't we vote? If you think about all the other annexations that are voluntary, you have the home, the property owner coming to you and asking to be annexed, and you all have the decision-making power. So the legislature looking at this said, well, why would it be any different here? If you, as a body, think that this annexation makes sense, and the voters in that area approve it, then you can do it without the referendum in the city. But you can optionally choose to make it contingent on approval in both places. That's something you will have to decide. If the annexation passes by a majority vote of the registered electors in the area proposed for annexation, it passes. And if a separate referendum is held within the municipality, a majority vote by the municipal electors also has to be obtained. So again, if you decide to have both elections, there has to be a majority in both. If you decide to only have the one for South Apopka, then it's just those voters that matter for this purpose. So that's it in terms of the procedures. As I said, there is a detailed memorandum that you all got, would I assume be available for public records if somebody wants to get the full picture. But that's, those are the steps kind of summarized for you.
And the reason I asked Cliff to bring this forward, I didn't, it was going to take this long to put all the steps in place, because, you know, we obviously have a general election coming up, September the second, which will be for the Geraldine Thompson Senate seat. I thought, well, if we wanted to, which would include the area to be annexed, it could, we could have piggybacked off the Orange County election. So that was the reason. And I went to Cliff to ask him about it, and he said, well, Mayor, I think we've missed, you know, we've missed that, the time to make that happen. So I just, but I did, while we, while we at least brought it up, I wanted him to come forward and just let, let everyone know the steps.
It's a good point to raise, because, and I provided in the memo an example timeline. Day one through thirty is the preparation. This is an example. It doesn't mean this is how it would work, but this is how it might work. Day one through thirty is preparation of the annexation feasibility study. So day thirty would be submitting that study to Orange County Board of County Commissioners. Day forty-five through forty-eight, again, at least fifteen days after the feasibility study is submitted, commence the preparation of the ordinance, schedule the public hearings, and publish the ordinance and all that. Day fifty-five, which is at least seventy-seven days after ad first advertisement, and at least ten days after mailing notices, is the first reading public hearing of annexation ordinance. Of course, all of this has to comply with your meeting schedule, but this is just an example. Day sixty would be published advertisement for the second public hearing. Day sixty-five, second reading, public hearing of annexation ordinance. Day sixty-six through ninety-four, schedule and publish notice of referendum once per week for two consecutive weeks, if applicable, obtain consent of the annexation property owners. If it's less than that, if it's more than that seventy percent are non-electors, the property owners hold the referendum. And then, ten days after the referendum, assuming it passes, either in one or both locations, then the ordinance is effective. So minimum time is a hundred and five days from when we start.
Anything else? All right. Any questions for Cliff?
The, what you were just reading from, are we able to get a copy of?
The memo?
Yes.
Yeah, it's been distributed.
Yeah. Was that in our packet?
I just got.
Like, may I approach? I'll give you mine.
Oh, if you can just send it to me, that would.
Yeah, sure.
Circulate.
I mean, I submitted it. I assume it was in all the packets. I don't know.
Okay, so I didn't, it's not on the website for everyone to take a look at.
I'll make sure, get, if that, just to make sure, I'll email it to everybody. I just assumed that was done. Anything else?
Yes, let me ask. Since you indicated we may not be able to make it by the September election, if we started the process now, could we make it by the March election?
Oh, yeah. A hundred percent. Again, I don't know what the feasibility is going to say. There's ifs, but if I assume everything goes relatively smoothly, absolutely.
All right. So then, Mayor, what we need to do to get the feasibility study initiated?
What? If it's under fifty K, oh, I'm sorry.
Name?
It would only be three quotes. I don't.
It would only be three quotes. I don't try to come up.
No, name and address.
All right. Blanche, Finance Director. Good evening, Mayor. Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. If it's under 50,000, then we just need three quotes. But if it's over 50,000, we go through the former solicitation process that has to be advertised 30 days.
Any idea?
Not. I was trying to email staff and ask, get them to ask around, you know, find out what others have paid.
And Susan, could you also check, see if you can find any cost for that?
Yeah.
See if you can, between finance and.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll reach out and find out what others have potentially paid for that. And then that'll determine which way we need to go.
You have that before we leave today?
You know, hey, that magic trick.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I just have a question for the attorney, City Attorney. The feasibility study, what does that encompass? I mean, when we get it done, what, where does it go? What happens when the county receives it? What are they?
Essentially, it's notice to the county. There's nothing that says what the county will or won't do with it. I assume if they have feedback for you, they'll tell you. But the purpose is to determine the feasibility of providing services to the annexed area, which again, I assume in this case is not an issue. They're adjacent to the city and all the other things that you would look for. But that's the purpose of it, and it's a statutory requirement.
Any other questions?
In regards to the consent from the property owners, Attorney Clifford? In regards to the consent for the property owners?
Yes.
You mentioned that it's a possibility that we don't have to get consent from the current city. It was two different, it was two different groups.
Yeah. Well, the consent issue is totally separate from whether you have two referendums. If the area to be annexed, if 70% or greater than 70% of the ownership of property is by non-electors, say businesses, a restaurant owner who doesn't vote in the city, is not a Apopka voter, any of those things, just has property, or a warehouse owner, again, not a resident or electorate. So that if you look at the property and you look at a map and more than 70% of the land to be annexed doesn't include electors, then you have to go to the people who actually are the electors and get 50% of those to say, yeah, we consent to the referendum. So if it's less, and I assume it's less, but I don't know. If it's less than 70% of the land is owned by non-electors, then you don't have the consent requirement. That's secondary. The other thing is you have a choice that you have to have the referendum election in the area to be annexed, in this case, South Apopka. But you don't have to have a referendum corresponding in the city of Apopka, but you can. And if you do, then both sides have to approve. But the reason you don't have to have it in Apopka specifically is because you already have the authority vested in U.S. legislative body to annex properties that are adjacent, compact and contiguous and all the other things, and we do it all the time. So the legislature's decided, while you can have an election here if you want to, to make it contingent, you have the authority on your own and you don't have to do that. But you do have to get their agreement to take them in. That's the issue.
Perfect, okay. That was, thank you.
And I'd, so you're saying about 105 days from start to finish to be able to get to where we need to be?
On an optimal timeline, yes.
Absolutely. So then, we would want to, because I'm very big about public input, understanding concerns and pain points, things of that nature. We'd want to do workshops or education sessions well before that or during that process?
Well, there are a minimum of two public hearings, but if you wanted more workshops, those would add to the timeline. But yeah, that would all be up to you guys.
Okay.
So a lot of this timeline is on you. Because even if all these steps were done, then it'd be, okay, which ballot do we want to be on? How soon do we want to put before? When do we want to have the ordinance? Do we want to have workshops before the ordinance? So we want to have, yes, the workshops that are required for the ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. So those things are on you. But an optimal timeline where you check all the boxes is about 105 days.
Okay. So that's minimal requirements met is 105 days. So of course, we want to do a little bit more there. So, okay, thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Cliff. Appreciate it. All right. So we have.
Before we take a deep dive in there, if I can ask City Administrator, our interim City Administrator, Williams and our City Clerk as well, for any of our proclamations and presentations moving forward, can we make sure we get copies of those uploaded beforehand? Because I just want to, we've kind of, we don't usually have any of the proclamations uploaded. The residents aren't able to see them beforehand as well as the presentation. So like this presentation today, I didn't know at all it was going to be on that. So I didn't get any memorandum or anything of that nature.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can look at making sure those are included.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because again, it helps the residents understand where we're going, what we're doing and things of that nature. So as long as we'll have that moving forward, that's great. The other thing, I want to, motion to restore our public comment to its proper place where it was originally at in the beginning of the meeting before consent agenda. I want this effective immediately. It needs to be recorded. It needs to be pursuant to Resolution 2016-16. And it needs to be effective at this meeting now. So that's a motion, a proper motion.
It's on the agenda.
That's not the agenda, and it's about a different resolution that has nothing to do with what we've done. We've gone through, what is it, 18 meetings? 18 total meetings, and today will be the 19th meeting that we've made residents wait for hours to speak to us, to address us properly. They've been disenfranchised, marginalized. We've attacked them in different ways. And by we, I mean, Mayor, you have attacked them by doing this. We've had students in the audience wait till midnight to be able to address us about their concerns. We've had our City Attorney on August 7th, when this all started, when you unilaterally changed the public comment section, recommend that we have a coach come in to properly teach how to run a meeting with decorum. That was never taken up. I mean, I believe we spent somewhere between 25 and 60,000 some months on City Attorney recommendations that we're not listening to. We've made motions, both Commissioner Velazquez and myself have made motions to bring this back. It's, we already have a resolution in place, 2016-16 already applies to this. And you have not equitably and consistently applied this to residents, to us. And there's no reason why we need to have a new resolution in place. You've instructed our IT Director, Rob Hitler, to turn off the live feed. We have had Resolution 2016-16 in place for eight years, working properly and functioning properly. That's 192 meetings before it was unilaterally changed August 7th of 2024, where we made residents wait till the end of the meeting. Adding a new resolution to this, if we can't apply the resolution that's already in place that protects the residents and us with decorum and the things in nature that consistently, we, it needs to be consistently applied, this new resolution is worthless. So let's keep what's in place and apply that equitably and consistently to all of our residents. Let's put the residents back where they belong, right in front. We need to listen to them first and then do the business.
Thank you.
Nope, I made a proper motion.
So. It is on the agenda to review, and I understand that we, and I'm going to say Commissioner Nesta and myself, we have consistently asked for it to be put back at the beginning. I saw that it is on the agenda today. Again, it's the last thing that we are going to be addressing. You did make a motion. I've been consistent about the motion. So I will second and allow the rest of the commissioners to either vote for it or vote it down. But we still are going to hear it at the end of this agenda. So I will second it because it's been consistent about bringing it to the forefront.
And let me just speak. I did speak to different residents and I did make a commitment to the residents that I also did agree that we should move public comment back to the beginning. However, I do see that it is going to be addressed at the resolution. And I do feel that this resolution does actually do exactly what is that the residents is asking us to do. In addition to that, it gave the residents two times to actually speak. So I would also, I do agree with the motion for this meeting to allow public comment to go first. However, I do also agree with the resolution and also that it needs to be heard as well.
So we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson, you were yes on the motion?
I was, yeah, I was yes.
So at this meeting moving forward, we will have public comment before consent agenda properly recorded the way it was prior to August 7th moving forward. So we will now have public comment before consent agenda.
Well, I'll just say for this, mine was for this meeting because I know the resolution needs to be discussed. And so for this meeting, I will agree for a public comment to go first.
The resolution at the end, and I absolutely hear you on that, the resolution at the end of this meeting is completely different. It limits time. Resolution 2016-16, which provides a policy for how to address the council, does offer the same exact items, it just offers more time. You get to speak twice as well, whether it's a, something that's on the agenda or something that's not on the agenda. It promotes the same things without limiting the timelines, without having some unilateral decisions being made of if there's too many people speaking, because there's never a number assigned to if there's too many members to speak about an item. If that just, is it five? Is it 30? Is it 100? So I want to make sure my residents have, our residents have all the opportunity to speak and as much time as they feel they need to properly articulate to us their concerns.
Absolutely. I agree. However, the resolution, we need to discuss the resolution.
And that, my motion had nothing to do with, it's completely separate.
Okay.
Okay. So, so what? So back to you, Commissioner Anderson. I'm trying to understand.
So as, it's just for this meeting?
Okay. So then you need to, that's different than the motion that Commissioner Nesta brought forward, so.
It's moving forward. This is, this is that motion.
And she just said that she's willing to agree with your motion, but only if it's for this meeting only.
Because I think it's fair that we discuss.
Oh, we're still, we can still absolutely discuss that. I'm not taking that off. I'm not saying to stop that or cancel it.
For this meeting only.
But no, I'm not changing my motion.
I said the same thing. I said for this, not whether it's this meeting.
That's not what he was telling.
We're agreeing to bring the public comment today.
Today.
To this meeting.
Here's my point, is that we can, we can apply 2016-16 that's already in place in perpetuity. Should 25-19 be approved today, it would supersede 2016-16. So you can approve it, and if for some reason 2025-19 doesn't get approved, then 2016-16 would be proper and in place.
I think it will, though. I think, I think we, so we're, we're, so we need to go back then. It sounds like we've got two that are, the motion that was made by Commissioner Nesta. We've got a couple of members that are.
Yeah, let me, let me help as best I can. First, there was a motion, a second, and a vote, and it passed 3 to 2.
Correct.
Now, there's a discussion that a couple of folks may have thought they voted on something different than what I heard the motion. Because I definitely understood what Mr. Nesta's motion was. So the options are to leave things as they are, then consider the resolution and, as he mentioned, to supersede the one that we just essentially reinstated, or to make a motion to reconsider by one of the people who voted for it, that would be one of you two, to reconsider it, put it back on the table to reconsider it. If you voted to reconsider it and that passed, then we'd be back at square one with Mr. Nesta's motion or some other motion to see if it gets a second and to move forward. That's essentially the procedural situation that we're in. I don't know which way y'all want to go, but that's where we are procedurally.
So as the vote stands, we can move it, we will move it, and the vote was to move it right now before consent agenda items, to have public comment livestreamed properly the way it was prior to August 7th of 2024, when it was unilaterally moved, 18 meetings ago, that the publics had to wait hours to address us.
Commissioner Anderson, are you?
I'm okay with it. Leave it like it is. That's fine.
All right. All right, move on. We got.
No, that's, that's not how that works. We had a motion.
No, we.
We got it. It passed. Correct. So now it's public comment. It was effective immediately. Couldn't have been more clear about that. So now it's public comment. So that's it. Let's, Mrs. Bone, let's move on to that then. Let's stop making our residents wait.
Mike Durant, Claremont. Commissioner Nesta, Anderson, and Blanche, thank you so much. This is long overdue. Public comment is super important, and the timing of it is important. That, look at the chamber when everybody's here and they can hear what's going on. The live stream is important when people that are not here, that they get to see what's going on. Two years ago, I had to come here every meeting and fight for something that I thought was important for one of your departments and our firefighters. I was able to use public comment as a tool to hold the city accountable and the transparency of what was going on and things that needed to be changed. Had public comment been then in the environment that it's been now in the last 18 meetings, maybe those changes would not have happened. It is super important that people can come here and be able to talk to you guys and talk to other residents, either that are here or on the live stream, to let everybody know what's going on. I don't know why we are so afraid of transparency. Hiding things makes everybody fearful and doubtful. Just be open and honest, and at the end of the day, we can agree to disagree on some items. I strongly recommend that we hold decorum. And a mayor can issue a warning and a person violates that, have them removed. Your deputies are here. Have them removed. He gets it to the timeline and decorum, but let the residents come here and speak. This is super, super important. Commissioner Anderson, I thank you so much. It was because of you, because I know Nesta and Velazquez has been campaigning for this, residents have been campaigning for this. And nothing has gotten done. And because of you today, it's done. The resolution that is going to be discussed at the end of this meeting, you're limiting your residents to 30 minutes. This place is full, and this is the afternoon meeting. Our night meetings are normally even more people that come in here. 30 minutes isn't enough. Leave it the way that it has been. It's been working like that for eight years. And it allowed me to come in here and fight for our fire department. And I guarantee you, because of that, it has saved lives. We don't know what's coming down the road later. And a resident might need to come here and speak to whoever is sitting up here, to be able to speak to the residents, whether they're here or online. Transparency is the, is the most important thing that has to go on in this city. We shouldn't hide from it. We should embrace it. It's okay to be wrong. It's okay to admit to our mistakes. And just bring it out in the open. Let's work on it and get it done. Commissioner Anderson, thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Do you have a second here to set up? Yeah, that works. Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane here in Apopka. As you know, I volunteer with the police department. I'm one of the eight of our 80 members that actually drive a patrol car. I drove Monday and I asked the supervisor on duty, where would you like me to be? He said, if you would, please go to our construction sites. I went to our construction sites. We have thousands of new homes, condominiums, townhomes, apartments popping up all over community. If you've not been by Binion Road or Boy Scout Road or on Plymouth Sorento or Kelly Park, they're falling out of the woods. It's unbelievable. More concerning is that I have a water restriction. You can't open a website without popping up, oh, hey, it's water restriction time. And we've got these developments watering at between 11 and 3:00 in the afternoon, full pressure. I can't speak for anyone else. I don't have full pressure with my, with my system. And yet they're getting it. This doesn't make any sense to me. Today, I bring you the letter I. Letter I for infrastructure. Recognize, look at it, because we don't have it in the city for the growth that we're proposing. We have, taxpayers are telling you that we need to slow the growth. We've proposed motoriums. We proposed using what Orange County does by slowing the process down. But no, Apopka has. We proposed using what Orange County does by slowing the process down. But no, Apopka has embraces the damn the torpedoes full speed ahead mentality. As Union Admiral David Fairgot deployed during the Civil War in the Battle of Mobile Bay and going through the inlet, there were torpedoes. That's what they called them then. They're actually mines. Let us look today at our mines in the community. World War II mine, community flooding. This is the war, this is the Civil War mine. Golden Gem Pond. Thousand new homes on Golden Gem, thirteen hundred new homes at Golden Gem. It's still a cattle path. Florida schools ranked forty-seventh in the country, forty-seventh. Schools over capacity, underfunded. Cash for private charter schools, religious schools, without meeting minimum requirements that are required for our public schools. Another issue. Five of our fifteen Apopka schools are, guess what? Overcapacity. Safe pedestrian bike paths. We don't have enough. They're not there. Why? Because we don't have the infrastructure. Needed road repairs. Another one. Infrastructure. Lack of reclaimed water pressure. I don't have to tell anyone else about that. I know what my problem is. Water restriction. Chief Article says, oh, we're building new wells. Those belts should have been built two years ago with the way we're produced. We're approving new development. Fair to execute CRA funds. Critical staff vacancies not filled, and only three, only three Apopka department heads last year in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget indicated they had what they needed to do their job. That's our problems today. We have to fix that. We look to you to successfully navigate us through these mines. We continue to approve one development after another. We must stop our, one day late, dollar short, too little, too late. Trying to close the gate after the cattle already of the corral and putting a Band-Aid on arterial bleed must stop. You are failing to act in the best interest of the citizens who elected you. As my mother said, you know, you have to, you talked in deaf ears. This is my comment. These are shoelaces. Cause that's what I feel and most of the people here feel they've been talking to for the last couple of years. Thank you.
Leroy Bell, Mark Heller. First of all, I want to piggyback off Mike Rand, Commissioner Anderson, Velazquez, and Nesta. Thank you for bringing back public comment. But it's still weighing heavy on my heart that the mayor and Commissioner Smith don't seem to want to hear from the public. With this in place, now we can go through all these different grants where people can come up at the head of the start of grant appropriation and they can complain. Like up on Eighth and Washington, where a contract was, uh, gi- given to one contractor, and it was supposed to start building this house over four or five months. And then it ended up with the mayor's best friend have the contract. And if you look at the list, the list said, is there's a conflict of interest? Yes, that is a conflict of interest. When the contractor is the best friend of the owner and the contractor is the best friend of the mayor. And if you go back and look at all the sidewalks and stuff that were built up north, it was built up by this contractor. Uh, well, you know, I, I see that you frowned, but it's finally coming, the chicken's coming home to roost, and they finally made it here today. But the thing about it is, even in the process of picking these houses to be refurbished, the one on Eighth and Central on the west side, you guys finna spend a hundred or so thousand dollars to refurbish this house, and this house just, they just put a brand new roof on this house, brand new solar on this house. They'd have went through this house, and the only thing this house need is a mitigation of, uh, uh, duke around the building and maybe a two thousand dollar paint job. Where the rest of that money going? This money gonna be missed just like the hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the homeless. This money gonna be missed like the fifty-seven thousand dollars that were missed for the misappropriation of COVID funds. But then yet you're still, Commissioner Smith and, uh, uh, you, ma'am, y'all don't want to hear this from the, uh, community. Why? It's time to stand up. It's time to stand up and stand up for the citizen of Apopka. I know you don't want to hear from me because every chance I get, I'm gonna let you know how I feel and don't care how you think. But again, finally the chicken coming home to roost.
Good afternoon. Albert McKimme, three-six-zero-three Golden Gem Road. I am the direct neighbor of Golden Gem Retention Pond. Over the period of time that I've been trying to develop my property, I've been discriminated against. I've been intimidated and I've been threatened, not only by members of city staff, but by members of the community who work on behalf of the city. I'm not going to tolerate anymore. I'm not here today to, to make accusations or to try and, and put blame on anyone. I'm here today to tell the simple truth. The simple truth is, commissioners, if you're taking time to read my folder, you would know exactly what was going on in the city. Most of you have refused to, to meet me and, and haven't done that. Let's look at what the city attorney said last meeting. He hailed us as a success that St. John's has given us an extension of six months to continue to develop Golden Gem Road. That wasn't, that wasn't a victory. That was a slap in the face for Apopka. Because on the twenty-third of April, twenty twenty-four, the city applied to St. John's for a three-year extension, saying that it would take them to twenty twenty-seven, and the estimated cost is twenty-seven million. Don't believe me? I can show you the records. Did you commissioners know that before I told you? Probably not. So why don't you know? I don't know. Anyway, why are we not doing any work at Golden Gem Road? It's because the engineers and your contractors haven't got solutions. I have solutions. Mayor, I'm happy to give you the solutions, but please don't laugh at me again like you did last week. I'm not here to crucify anyone. Golden Gem Road, it's, it's infested with mosquitoes. There's nothing being done. The Environmental Protection Agency gives you time limits to do stuff. It's not been done. Why is it not being done? Because you don't have the solutions. You don't have the ability to figure out how to do it. Well, I'll give you a clue today. There's pipes going to Golden Gem Road that can deliver water to the retention ponds, but there's no outlet pipes. So we can't pump water out of Golden Gem Road. No, that's not true. We can pump water out of Golden Gem Road. All you do is return the flow from the pipe that took the water in and return it into that pipe. Can we do that just now? No, because the water's contaminated. But we could bring in a mobile unit, and we could pump out thirty million gallons of water that's left in Golden Gem Road just now, treat it and pump it out, and people could use it. Those pipes deliver water all over the city that, that, that led to Golden Gem Road. It's not difficult to, to put in valves to adjust the flow and direct it. So the first thing is, we don't need to wait any longer to remove water from Golden Gem Road. Mayor, I've given you a solution. We have the ability to, to, to fix this. What we also need to realize is we have probably four million dollars worth of pond liners in Golden Gem Road that have been allowed to disintegrate. They're no longer structurally sound. They're no longer ready to use. So we're gonna have to find four million dollars to replace those, or we're gonna have to find a way to rejuvenate Golden Gem Road without the use of liners. That could cost a lot of money because if we were to raise the bottom of the pond, it means that we can have to bring in possibly two hundred thousand tons of clay. That's just napkin mass. But that's going to be difficult, and it would also take a year to bring in that amount. It's thirteen thousand lorry loads or truckloads of clay. You would have to buy that, and you're gonna have to transport it. I have solutions. I have solutions for your problems with annexations. But the fact of the matter is if you don't allow the public to speak, if you don't allow us to interact, we can't help. I look at Sylvester Hall. I look at lots of people who come down here, and they all want us to succeed. Mayor, I'm here. I'm not looking to, to, to crucify anyone. Let us help you. You have problems you can't solve.
Virginia Street, twenty-one nineteen Palm Vista Drive. Um, thank you for your support, um, in acknowledging the police. Um, they make special day and the municipal clerks. I think that that is something that is, um, very worthy and, um, well deserved. Um, and also thank you for moving the comments up to the beginning. It allows me to be able to manage my life a little bit better with children. Uh, on behalf of the needy and the homeless, unhoused, um, in Apopka, the last, since the last meeting, we've had, uh, some advancement. But thank you for the support that you have provided. Uh, continue to do that. Continue to support the unhoused and the needy with the economy, the way it's going, food prices going up. There are lots of churches and lots of places that are providing assistance for, uh, food, clothing, and hygiene. So just whatever way you do that and whatever organization you support, please continue to do that. Uh, over the last, since the last meeting, we've had a couple of, um, incidents where there was, um, one of, um, the people that I work with had gotten hit by a car right here in front of the McDonald's and it passed away from its injuries. Um, and then we also had another one that has passed away, uh, from, uh, some, uh, situation also. So they are out here. They are humans. Um, please be careful if you are, um, uh, there are some that, you know, might be using wheelchairs, walkers. They're, they're, they're out there, and a lot of times they're in plain sight. You don't see them, but you see them. You know, so whatever you can do to support the unhoused and the needy, um, just because they may have a house doesn't mean they don't need food. You know, and just because they have food doesn't mean they have a house. So there are lots of situations, and there are lots of organizations that are opening up, and I ask you to continue to support. I know we're having the next, when is the next CRA meeting to finalize the list that we went over? That's coming up, right?
For the next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay. So as we continue to look for solutions, um, for resource centers and things that people can go to, because it's already hot. We didn't get a, we didn't get a spring this year. We got, uh, we went straight to the heat. So it's already hot, and they're going to be looking for places to try to cool themselves, just like we will. You know, and McDonald's is not an option. They don't allow them in there but thirty minutes at a time. And then same thing with all the restaurants. If they had a place to where they could go during the hottest part of the day and be able to cool themselves, charge their phones, take a shower, you know, that would be something that would be, uh, very well received in our neighborhood. So I thank you very much for your time.
Good afternoon, City Council. Really appreciate having this opportunity to speak with you guys. Um, but my concern is more so with, um, the CRA possibly leaving. And, um, I know there has been a lot of discussion on, um, different funding, how you guys are using all those particulars. But I have a different idea, um, that I will hopefully that you guys can maybe pursue. And this is kind of just from some quick research I did, uh, with neighborhood improvement districts. Maybe a tool that can be used to replace the CRA if that were to go away. Um, I know, and this is information I grabbed off the internet, um, the city of Orlando looking into doing something similar. Um, and I don't know if you know Kyle Shep, but that was the city attorney there. But some of the things, um, just kind of speaking from Florida for, for a whole, there was thirty-three, um, NIDs throughout Florida. Um, eleven counties have NID ordinances, um, eleven NIDs in Broward County, one in Orange County, which I'm quite sure, um, the mayor's mayor, but which is on Bloxham Trail, and then there's four in, um, Osceola. Um, the different types of local government NIDs, that's Florida statute one sixty-three, um, point five, um, zero six. And then you have a property under association NID, a special NID, which it breaks out, one being residential and the other being business. Um, and then you have a community redevelopment NID. So my, my thought is just if the CRA is going away, I still think we need to look at tools that we can use to beautify the area, to put money back into the, um, to the area to support businesses or to support residential areas to where, hey, if there's, if it's been done in the past, it can be done in the future. Um, I think this is the avenues you can kind of look at, um, propose, kick around, but to, if it were to go away, I know, I think last, I think y'all got to say the budget was about four million dollars. Um, hey, it may not be four million dollars starting up, but I still think there should be a pool of money or resources that can be tapped into, that can be used. Because for example, I know I wasn't able to attend a lot of meetings, but I didn't hear anybody talk about the beautification along four forty-one. Currently have like three or four palm trees that's been cut down, never been replaced. Just kind of, when you look at the aesthetics of the community, it's kind of tells you, well, if you won't take care of that, what would you take care of? So, um, I know there have been projects talked about, um, signs in Apopka, welcome to Apopka. Those things haven't been done. I know there were discussions about doing things along the trail, which, for example, I know I was in Tampa this past weekend. They have a heroes park. You guys just did a proclamation to the fire department, but there's also proclamation for, um, I'm sorry, police department. It can also be fire department, it can also be veterans. So there are other things we can look at to bring, um, a sense of community because, you know, someone loses in their life, um, being disabled from providing a service for the public, I think that should be kind of for and foremost. Um, I know we have a dedication to nine-one, nine-eleven out front. So these are some things that we can probably look at NIDs to help extend and benefit areas as well. So hopefully you guys could give that consideration and hopefully some discussion can be had to at least, um, review that, that as an option if it were to go away. Now, if it doesn't go away, then we still have CRA, but that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
All right. We have ten consent agenda items. We're gonna, we're gonna move the eleventh consent, consent agenda item to the public hearing number five.
And eleven, it's the CDVG grant fund, that, that updated one? We're moving that?
Correct.
Okay. And then the only, we're just moving the annexation of the bondage north. That's being removed completely, or it's being tabled to June?
June fourth meeting.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone from the diocese or the public would like to pull out any of the agenda items from the consent? Not look for a motion to approve the, the first ten consent agenda items. Got a motion, Mike Smith? Second, say Mike, Commissioner Velazquez. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Or closed motion carries unanimously. Next up, interlocal agreement, Orange County, Jean Sanchez.
Good afternoon. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to prove the transfer of Golden Gem Road from Capitol Reef Way to Kelly Park Road from Orange County to the city of Apopka. At its meeting on June ninth, twenty twenty-four, the city council approved the interlocal agreement transferring a section of Golden Gem from Capitol Reef Way to Kelly Park Road to the city. Subsequently, Orange County requested additional changes to the language, and due to those changes, the agreement must be brought back to the city council for approval and then scheduled to Orange County BCC for their approval. This segment is within the city's Hokkai Division Plan that's been in place since the comprehensive plan in nineteen ninety-one. It has also been heavily impacted by new city developments. The road was constructed by the county before two thousand The road was constructed by the county before two thousand and not fully, fully paved until two thousand three. The city pursued this ILA based on Apopka's experience of unprecedented growth over the last several years. But before any significant development occurred in the area, traffic volumes in the, on the road began to increase due to the opening. Of State Road four twenty-nine Kelly Park Interchange and high growth in the northwest unincorporated Orange County. Significant, a significant portion of the traffic volume was attributable to origins and designations, and destinations outside of city limits. City staff then with county staff met to discuss future roadway plans and partnership to address future roadway improvements in the city. However, the county declined to partner with the city to fund the design. And reconstruction of Golden Gem Road and offered seven hundred and fifty thousand for the resurfacing of the entire road. Instead of sharing the reconstruction cost of thirteen million dollars at the time, it was an estimate about three to four years ago. I um gave you an eleven by seventeen of that breakdown. Golden Gem Road is substandard and requires full reconstruction to meet city or county standards. And without the county as a cost-sharing partner, the city looked to the development community to help fund the design. The city council entered into the pioneering agreement with development partners in the. Kelly Park Interchange Form Based Code area to address funding for the northern portion of Golden Gem Road. Therefore, to ensure that projects along this road move forward to realize the city's KPI vision. And to keep pace with roadway demands, the design phase of the northern half is underway. And to minimize the time and cost and ensure that this piece of golden gem can handle the oncoming, oncoming developments brought about. By the city's KPI vision plan, it is in the city's best interest to acquire this section of the road and manage the construction. If approved, we will ask Orange County to utilize the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Initially offered towards the resurfacing of the southern portion. That they maintain as the city is not aware that this portion of Golden Gem. Or any part of Golden Gem is slated for any improvements in their work program. With that said, the recommended motion is to approve the transfer of Golden Gem Road. From Capitol Reef Way to Kelly Park Road from Orange County to the city of Apopka. And authorize the mayor to sign and execute the interlocal agreement for this section of Golden Gem. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
Yes, Ms. Sanchez, we spoke about this in our agenda review yesterday, so I appreciate you um taking the time yesterday to detail and articulate. The difference between the two agreements, the one we already agreed to and then this new one. So the biggest one and the, and the one that I'm getting held up on the most, that what the change was is that we're. Saying no to seven hundred and fifty thousand, three quarters of a million dollars, although I understand that. There's, I guess, walk me through why we said no to that.
For, in reference to seven hundred and fifty?
Yes.
As I understand it, when I took over this project, the seven fifty was initially offered by the county to resurface the entire road. Um, in response to our offer to cost share to reconstruct the whole road. Um, so with that said, when they refused to help us with reconstruction Golden Gem, reconstruct, the reconstruction of Golden Gem Road. We wanted to have them at least put some improvements on the southern half. Not exactly, it won't, it won't match our improvements, because our road, the, the design of Golden Gem Road is a full reconstruction. Which means we had to come up with drone it, drainage, um. I'm not sure if there's right of way acquisition right now, because we've had um development partners um donate. Uh, certain areas for drainage um and stormwater storage, but um that's beside the point, I suppose.
And we're already moving forward with design of Golden Gem, correct?
We're almost at sixty percent.
Okay, now, I don't know if we've done more research, Mrs. Sherman, we did just speak about this as well. Are we able to use impact fees to improve that road, cause it isn't a truly a uh?
It's capacity and safety, it's, the capacity portion is that we're adding in our design. We're adding um turn lanes, bike trails, multi-use paths in our design. So that adds capacity to the road, um but.
I'm not sure what Jean just said, I know in the earlier meetings, I was told that it was not a capacity issue with this road. I know that they're trying to do some improvements to the road. And per the ordinance, um and the use of impact fees, there has to be some type of expansion, that capacity issue. I have the auditor here, so I don't want to get caught off guard, this is. One particular type of funding where I, as the finance director, has to sign off on the affidavit. So I want to be very comfortable and very clear with that, and what we're gonna do is go back and look at the ordinance. And see what those requirements are to state statute and to confirm.
Okay, and that's, I guess my concern at this point is that we said no to seven hundred and fifty thousand, and in the old agreement, it specifically stated it wasn't for the whole road, that it was. Just for the road segment that we are taking over, so. Again, seven hundred and fifty thousand is not going to replace that whole road by any means, but money is money, and I will take three quarters of a million dollars any day. Cause that's less taxes out of our, our residents' pockets, so. And if we can't use impact fees, that's also concerning of, okay, where are we taking these funds from, how are we gonna improve this road, we have. And we have another project we're approving, or that's on our agenda to approve on that same road tonight, so. Just trying to get a comfort level there of how we're gonna navigate this moving forward. To properly fund it, not only take it over, but fund it and make sure that our residents have the services and expectations of.
And as I understand it, this is coming up in the upcoming budget, so we'll have time to have that conversation and get that verification prior to then.
But we'll already have taken over the road. So that, that's my concern, and so we're estimating ten million, seven to ten million?
I heard thirteen million and.
Well, that's for the whole.
Two or three years.
That's from.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, thirteen million for the whole wor- road, almost four years ago. And um if you be want full clarification, we have a consultant here. Um, who incidentally was the person to discuss this at the inception of this idea takeover. Golden Gem and um she's also the one particularly um. Familiar with working with our other consultants who is designing this road, so it's Pam Richmond. If she wants to answer some questions about whether or not.
If I can ask a few questions, sorry, it would just help, because there's a lot of kind of unanswered questions or, or the spirit of what was going on, just in. People aren't able to articulate it, because that, it, it's not each department head that was running with that, so. If I can re-articulate, are my concern is we're taking over part of this road, the whole road, and we got these, uh, the, the breakdown. Of about fourteen million, a little under thirteen million, uh, but that's for the entire stretch of Golden Gem, that's Golden Gem Road. From uh Poncan up to Kelly Park Road, we're only taking about half. Prices changed obviously in the last four years, so let's say it's ten million for just our segment that we're gonna take over. What I'm trying to understand is, number one, obviously, and we had that discussion, can impact fees pay for this? Cause we have money in that, there's other, if we're taking from reserves, it's scary, again, we're pulling money from uh, under the mattress, which is concerning to me. And then two. To what extent are developers, is this part of the pioneering agreement in any capacity? There was some ambiguity there from questions I've asked in the past, so. I guess we can kind of articulate that and walk through what the spirit and, and the understanding, cause my understanding, you negotiated this originally. So walk me through, if you can, all of that.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you from the beginning, from when we went to Orange County. And told them, look, we have a need here, this is your road, it's a functionally classified road. Let's work together to fix this road, we've got this big development coming in, but most of the traffic right now is county traffic.
Pam, why don't you go back and tell everybody what functionally classified road means?
A functionally classified road is a higher level road, it's a road that's designed, or in theory, not in this case, but always, everywhere else. It's designed to carry a higher um number of trips, it's built to a higher standard. But this road was built, it's a little more than asphalt on top of sand, and it was originally built by the county. As a road to the dump, and everybody knows that, so it wasn't built to carry. The kind of traffic that's forecast, it was built to carry the kind of traffic from five years ago, which was fifty cars a day. Most of those being trucks, trucks went to the dump. So knowing what was going on in the KPI, I went and sat down with the powers that be at the county. And told them, let us partner on this project, you know, it's, it's half y'all, it's half us. And they said, well, no, we don't really have any money. What they did tell me was they were going to resurface the road, it was in their um. Uh, resurfacing program, they put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars there, well. They held on to the money, they didn't resurface the road in anticipation of us taking the northern half, because that was the agreement that we reached. We'll take the more expensive northern half, they can keep the southern half that's not in great shape, or it's not in bad shape. And they'll spend that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to resurface the road to hold it in place. So we went forward, and if you look in the pioneering agreement, I think it's on page. Four, there's a whole section that talks about the funding of Golden Gem Road. And it's being funded through the pioneering agreement, but the pioneering agreement is all impact fee money. And let me be clear about what impact fee money can be used for, it can be used for capacity projects. A capacity project is not only defined as adding a lane, a capacity project is adding turn lanes. Is a capacity project in the sense of what we're talking about, because we are kind of multimodal, it can be a trail. So this is all in Florida statute, and it's also in um your code. That tells you, this is a very typical and excellent project to spend impact fee money on. I, I've been doing this for thirty years, I know what impact fee money can be spent on.
So you're confident that we'll be able to statutorily use impact fee funds for this project?
Yeah, you've done it before on other projects, so.
Each project's different though, so I just want to, you know, make sure.
Yes, I am telling you that. You know, a turn lane uh might add a little bit of capacity, but you only have to add a little bit of capacity for it to be called a capacity project.
Okay.
But the point I'm trying to make is, if you take that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Orange County. They will never resurface the bottom part of the road, we were at, I was at on another project that y'all know about that's coming up. Discussing Poncan Road with Orange County. And what they told us, and these are the people that make these decisions, they said, they're moving projects out of their CIP. So they said, probably in my lifetime, which, you know, I'm much older than you, so. We're talking probably twenty, fifty years, something like that, um they will never be making any improvements to Poncan Road, the kind of substantial. Improvements that need to be made, so if they're not gonna do Poncan, they're not gonna do Plumasorento, cause it's a much higher priority. And if they're not gonna do Poncan or Plumasorento, cause they say they don't have the resources, Golden Gem is, is not even on their horizon. So what you need to consider is that if they have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the resurfacing, and I don't doubt that. That seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in today's situation would, would be. Just probably enough to do the southern half of the road, you need to get them to bring that up to the highest standard that they can. Where, you're gonna do the northern half, and then you figure out ten years down the road, if you wanna make the southern half. If you wanna take the southern half and make it like the northern half, but if you take the whole road. You're on the hook, you're gonna start getting all the calls to do the stuff on the southern half. It, right now, it's a county functionally classified road, done, made functionally classified by the county. But built substandard, and tha- that's an awful lot of money for the county. To not participate in fixing something that they created, they've known about that interchange going in for twenty-five years. And, and they did nothing, and they knew what the interchange uh was gonna bring, and they still did nothing, and they think that. It's the easy way out for them is to make it your problem. You tried through me to try and make it a, a um, a um. Yeah, a, a partnership project, and it's not any different than a Coia Apopka Road or Benyon Road. They wanna make it your problem, they don't wanna partner on anything.
I still would like seven hundred and fifty thousand, though.
And, and you would like the southern end of the road to deteriorate to the point, cause, cause they won't spend any money to fix it. It'll, in, in five years, it'll be a, it'll be worse than the northern part, and they won't fix it.
But are we sure that that seven fifty is absolutely gonna be appropriated to that southern section?
Well.
Like, is there any guarantees or anything in writing that we know that that's gonna happen?
You could ask them for that, that's what the money was in their budget for.
Okay, and that's my concern, that's my only concern, is that we said no to money and kind of like a handshake deal saying, but you guys take care of that.
You're not saying no to money, you're telling them they should spend it on the southern half and fix that.
Right, but we're, there's no agreement, there's nothing in writing saying that they're absolutely gonna do that, so that's, that's just my concern, and I appreciate the background on this. It is helpful, and I just want to, I needed some comfort level too on the impact fees, being able to utilize those appropriately. Uh, to be able to upgrade this road to where it needs to be with the.
Commissioner, that's what I do for a living, and I would not stand here and lie to you.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, no, well, I thank you for being here, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
So I have a question, just a quick question, so. If we execute this interlocal agreement prior to getting something in writing, that they will bring the road up to the highest standard. Cause right now we don't have anything in writing that they will actually do that, right, we already agreed to waive the seven fifty, i- is that accurate?
The, the agreement has not yet been executed.
But if we execute this agreement, we are depending on them.
The seven fifty number is not there.
Okay, so what do we have to do to go back to renegotiate the, at the seven fifty to go towards the southern, southern border?
I'm not sure, we can, I mean, if, if, this is really just um. This ILA only addresses the northern portion that we're taking, so I'll have to ask.
That, you, you simply have to ask them, well, whether they'll put that back on the table, right now, it's not on the table. And the question has come up, well, if they were willing to give seven fifty for the whole thing, why won't they split it with us for half of it? Don't know, it's a good question, but right now the offer is zero, but you get the road. If you wanna go back for the seven fifty, that was tied to taking the whole road. We can ask them, I'm fairly confident that they're not at all reluctant to get that headache out of their. Cue and into yours, but I don't know till we ask.
In that previous agreement, though, it states specifically, it's for the road segment, it's only for the road segment. That we're describing, not the road, the road segment, which was described for, earlier in the, that agreement, so it wasn't for the whole road, it wasn't a. Whole road seven fifty, it was road segment seven fifty. So I just want to be clear on what, what they were.
My understanding was, it was, I don't know if that's the right way to characterize, north and south as opposed to what we are doing now. That's what's my understanding, if that's wrong, but in terms of, of whether it's available to us still, is simply a question that have to be asked.
So I think we need to ask that question, I think we need to go back to the drawn to board and just ask that with the seven fifty.
We will, then we will, sure, we will go back, um. Cliff, do I have to then, because our legal description only touches the northern, the northern portion.
Do you have to, do what?
Do I have to get a whole new legal description as an exhibit to this?
Did we have a legal description from the prior offer that we can revive?
We did not, no, we did not.
That, we, we definitely want to know exactly what we're getting.
Yeah.
And what we're getting the money for, so yes is the answer, if we don't already have that.
If we then ask, would we be required to take the southern half as well?
That, that's, that's a negotiation with them, I assume that what they offered before typically in government would be willing to offer again. If it solves the same problem that they felt like they had before, that they were willing to pay money to get rid of, so I assume that's the same. But in terms of the meeting of the minds portion, that we're talking about the same portion of the road that they're talking about, that is where the legal treatment comes in, and I don't know.
And we are, if you look at the original agreement, and I'll read it, that was uh taken out, it says, the parties agree that. That it is reasonable and for a public purpose that the county participate in city's construction of resurfacing improvements to the road segments. Which are necessary to bring the road segments up to standard of good repair as part of the transfer of road segment to the city. Prior to that, it said the road segment, and then it gives your exhibit A and the um, basically the legal. On, on what that, the northern section, the road segment is, so. To, that's what we've been discussing, I think, let's go back to that, that was a good agreement, that says better than this one, we feel. More money is better than less money, so as long as there, and it, I didn't see strings attached to this section either. Of if we do this, then we're not gonna do this, or vice versa, and I don't want to worry about Orange County's roads, I need to worry about ours, so. Let's get that seven fifty back on the table for the northern section that we're gonna be taking on.
Alrighty.
But, but now, it's my understanding that we're not resurfacing road, we are reconstructing the road.
We're re, we have to, there's no pond or drainage or anything.
They're gonna allow us to use that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reconstruct the road?
I'm not sure, so we'll have to ask that.
That's a big difference.
Well, it's not a no unless you ask.
Yes. So it's either, I guess, either or, either the seven fifty needs to go here or there. We just need our seven fifty somewhere.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, let me read up, I had a uh, this is a, an email from George Shuke, who's, I don't know what his title is.
He is the road guy at Orange County.
Yeah, yeah, anyway.
The road guy, that is, that's probably his official title.
While Pam wanted to reconstruct the road, and it's talking about Golden Gem, doesn't say north or south. Uh, it was determined that the county did not wish to participate in the reconstruction of Golden Gem, only fund the resurfacing of. Uh, it was determined that the county did not wish to participate in the reconstruction of Golden Gem, only fund the resurfacing of the original road. So to me, that means seven fifty for the whole road is what they're offering. And for for, you know, for thirteen million dollar fix.
Thirteen million, four years ago.
Yeah, right, so fifteen million or whatever it is, fix, so I, I mean, that's that's the worst deal in the world, take that.
But aren't we just taking it for, we're taking it even worse now, we're taking zero for.
But we're not fixing their their side, just the pond, just the pond alone. What was the pond? Property acquisition for a stormwater retention pond's a million bucks. So we, if if we wanna do the south part right, which we are doing the north part right, which we have our, we have retention there on the north side of Golden Gem. The south side just alone is a million bucks, so get the seven fifty, put in a retention pond, and we're and we're still short two hundred fifty.
But we're not discussing the south side. In the original agreement, that's within our packet, not emails that we don't have, it specifically states the road segment that is the northern section. It doesn't reference, you got, there's been a lot about talking about this is gonna be applied to the southern section, nowhere is that stated in here.
But but in either instance, we're talking about resurfacing as opposed to reconstruction. And resurfacing will not solve the problem that we need to solve. So since it's not our road, and it's Orange County's road, wh- while we take it and it's substandard. And then we let them spend the thirteen billion dollars and bring up the code. And have the residents call and complain to them, rather than coming here and complaining to us, cuz we took the road over.
And technically, I mean, we're dealing with a lot of variables, so if we were, if they were to offer seven fifty. To give to us to resurface, and we have, and in in return, we have to take the southern portion as well. We can't because our transportation element doesn't let us do that. The only reason why this got, this portion of Golden Gem Road got through is because the initial approval from city council. Preceded our transportation element that states we cannot take substandard roads.
And the other thing that I think needs to be brought up is the fifty percent rule, which we on the northern section of it, we now control. Both sides of the road.
For local roads, though, not functionally classified. So functionally classified roads like this one needs a separate agreement that states that. So um, well, it looks like uh the pleasure of the council, I I'm not sure if you have to take, do you do a vote?
If if I, let me just see if I can restate it, and then if if y'all wanna make a motion that this regard is fine. But it sounds like to me, A, the old deal, which I'm gonna call the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar deal. Whatever it included and whatever legal description it applied to, you'd like to put that, see if that can be put back on the table. And I, my suggestion, based on hearing the conversation, would that, that then you can compare, contrast. The current deal, which has no contribution from the county, but also limits our exposure, is that a fair summarization of where we are? Okay, and so to me, it makes sense, if that's the case, to to get the right, maybe Mister Roadman from Mister Shup is the guy. To ask and see if that's on the table, and then come back with a presentation that says, here's option A, we get seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is the problem that we get. We got option B, we don't get any money, but our problem is limited to this, cuz that's kind of what I'm understanding. And if that makes sense to you, somebody makes that motion, then staff can execute it. Do we wanna, a time certain on when to bring it back, cuz I know they work pretty slow, so that's a probably.
I can say that that particular individual we mentioned, he works slow.
So do we wanna put a. Time certain date on the, it won't be, it won't be the second meeting in in May, it probably wanna be the second meeting in June. What what would you think is a, if we wanted to put it as a date certain, given where we are?
Maybe the second meeting in June, or maybe the first meeting in July?
While we make it the, while we start with, while we will, while we postpone, we'll make it uh the first meeting in July, at least they. They know we got a, a date certain and. So we, maybe it helps push them along, but we got public comment first, and then we'll we'll.
Well, let me ask one, how does this affect the pioneer agreement?
The pioneering agreement has language in there that um states uh design and construction. For Golden Gem is is through the pioneer agreement. Um, but that's only after the construction of the Kelly Park Road widening. So that's the language, that's the relationship to the pioneer agreement. There's a section in there that addresses Golden Gem Road design and construction. In terms of funding.
Question, so are there any developments that are going to be affected if we move this into July? Because I think part of what we're trying to do here is to start the expansion. This road. For the developments that are already approved. But now, the developments are just gonna go forward with their construction.
So this is kind of where the pickle is, is that we are almost at sixty percent on our design for the road on that northern half. And we have some private developers along Golden Gem. That we are engaging with and that we've been engaging with in terms of helping us with road drainage or really um.
Because they are participating.
Yes, cuz obviously, they also have a ve- vested interest, right, in improving Golden Gem, so yes, it's gonna. This definitely affects our design of the Golden Gem Road. Um, we weren't honestly going anywhere. When this was being delayed, this ILA was being delayed, the design was was delayed as well.
So some of the developers were actually going to be part of the expansion, you know, as they start.
They're partnering with us.
So with with this delay, then they kind of have to be put on hold.
Um, I don't know how this would affect each and every one of them. Because I know one particular project is basing their construction site plan, which is full construction of the plans. Based on this, well, essentially based on this ILA, right?
So I will say this, I mean, cuz yesterday we had the pre agenda, I have a concern about the southern. Uh, section of Golden Gem. I just, we're investing so much into the northern, yet we have half of a road that's not functional. It's not even up, it's substandard. And it's not like we have two separate roads, it's one sep, it's one continuous road, so I. I would go back to try and figure out where that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Saying no to it, and then just letting the southern section kind of deteriorate because we can't take it on. I I don't know, I think we should go back.
That's not that we can't take it on, it's their responsibility. I think there's a big difference between us taking on a road and and. The county being responsible for a road that's that's classified, it's not in functional.
And I would just say too, just to know, and I mentioned this at the meeting as well, that. The city, I think even from the notes, we don't really have much interest in the southern portion. Other than the people who have some serious interest on there, right? Property owners who have contacted us thinking it's our road. Um, because our Kelly Park Interchange Form Based Code area for a regulating plan terminates around that. Okay, terminates around where the southern portion of this road begins. Just based on our legal description here, so and really, there's very little opportunity, if any, for annexation. Considering the Hubbard Construction Recycle Materials Places there. I don't know if we've ever contemplated taking over this, the southern portion at all.
But we still have some expectation to bring the road up to some kind of standard.
Certainly, people there have expectations, absolutely, but they have expectations on. A lot of roads being brought up to standard, you know, and those roads are not all ours. And those roads are not all affected by our development. So yes, I I see it, I see it, and certainly, I am the one who's taking calls about Golden Gem. Who live there, even in the southern portion, there's two particular constituents down there who are fairly interested in having the city. Take over even just a northern half.
Any other questions for staff?
Not will open up public comment.
Albert McCamey, three six oh three, Golden Gem Road. In terms of impact fees, impact fees can be used in Golden Gem Road. Commissioner Ryan uh came out and measured Golden Gem Road with me, and it was nineteen feet. The road has to be, I believe, taken up to something like twenty-six feet to meet standards. So if you wanna take twenty percent, which is what they would need to to uh to widen the road by, we're definitely. Increasing the width by more than twenty percent. So in fact, impact fees will be would be good for that. There's a fundamental misunderstanding here. We're speaking about Golden Gem Road north and south, but that's not really what it is. The way that we're speaking about things just now will mean that Golden Gem Road will actually be split into three parts. Let me explain why. The south part just now, from Poncon up to where the facility for for the recycled materials are. Was actually widened and subbase was put in there by the contractor who runs that facility. So that road was brought up to standard to some degree. So then we would have a section from that particular area up to Golden Reef Road. Which would still belong to Orange County, but which would still only be nineteen foot wide, and which has no subbase on it. So, in an analogy of a chain, the strength of a chain is only as good as its weakest link. So really, what you guys have gotta do is depend on impact fees coming from new developments, such as the one that 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 I was asking to be allowed to do. We need to fix Golden Gem Road from the entrance to the facility where where the recycling yard is. Up to Golden Reef Road, otherwise, you're gonna have roads that come down, narrow. And then come out again, and that area will have no subbase on it. So if it's not fit to travel the whole length of, it's not fit at all. So please, commissioners, if we're gonna do something, let's make it fair for everybody, for all the residents. And I urge you to 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 look at this and understand that Golden Gem Road will actually be three parts, not two. It won't be just a north and a south. The area, which some of you commissioners who've visited my property recently, that would be considered still part of the south. And you know how narrow that is? It won't, under the current recommendations, be fixed.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. This is so frustrating that we're spending this much time and effort because we don't get in front of our growth. This, our planning commission, a Popka Planning Commission, and this commission approved thirteen hundred homes on what's a glorified cattle trail. Without thought or planning related to roads and the amount of traffic. Thirteen hundred homes dump under this cattle path, and there's more development on it. It's another example of failing to plan is planning to fail, and we've got to stop doing this. It's infrastructure. We need to slow our growth, whether we do a moratorium, or whether we put speed bumps in, as Orange County did. We need to do something to get in front of this growth. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, close the public hearing, and looks like looking for a motion to um postpone this item. To the July second council meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries now. All right, next up, Andich South Major Development Plan.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Andich South Residential Major Development Plan. The subject properties are located on the southwest corner of Andich Road and Effie Drive, approximately fifty-four point eight acres in size. The subject properties are within the KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Zoning District. As well as the Transition Neighborhood District Overlay. The major development plan details a plan for a mix of residential projects that comprises three hundred and twenty-six. Single-family detached and attached units and a future commercial development on one point three seven acre tract. The plan calls for a hundred and ninety-three twenty, twenty-foot wide ton home units. Ninety-five rear-loaded lots with thirty-four feet of width, and thirty-eight rear-loaded lots with forty feet fifth, feet of width. The transition overlay requires an open space area of fifteen percent equivalent to six point zero one acres. And the neighborhood overlay requires twenty percent corresponding to two point nine two acres. About nine acres of open space is being proposed. The applicant proposes. Eleven point ten acres of open space that encompasses an amenity area, playground, buffer, and a matized water, stormwater pond. Internal connection points are offered from the south of the subdivision, including a link to the crossroads development. To the south via Firebrush, Firebrush Drive right of way, and two others east of said road. The plan also shows traffic calming elements such as a traffic circle and on-street parking along the east and western spine road. Landscaping plan proposes a diverse variety of trees that includes live oaks, red maples, sycamore, and southern magnolias. Located within the project area and installed with root barriers to block or redirect tree roots, preventing damage to structures and pavements. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on April eighth, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission voted four to one. To approve the major development plan. There is one dissent, Commissioner Robert Ryan, the Senate, based on the lack of capacity and water-related infrastructure. And lack of budget and construction date for Golden Gem Road. The recommended motion is to approve the Andich South Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
I I noticed in the staff report, it says that uh it's deficient in the middle school, but not in high school. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any other questions for Jean? All right, anybody from the public?
So here we go, where are you? I'm sorry, I was reading this again. The PNC Board Commissioner. Um, descended based on the lack of capacity in water-related infra- infrastructure. And lack of budget for Golden Gem reconstruction, which we already talked about, Golden Gem. But the concern is uh water-related inf- infrastructure, can you kind of?
I think utilities is what um. Robert, Commissioner Ryan was uh referring to. Um, I believe our city engineer was there at the meeting. But I'll let the applicant state and and try to recall.
Luke Classen with Appian Engineering, two two one Lee Road. The commissioner, I think there was some confusion with the planning commission, he referenced Golden Gem. This property isn't on Golden Gem, it's north of Kelly Park, it's actually adjacent to Andich and Effie. Uh, we're making improvements to both Andich and Effie road, so I I don't know how that got in there, but that's not really associated with this project, I think there was just. Mix up of projects. For the water, uh, he said he was concerned about water capacity, we. Did write the city and got confirmation that there is capacity in the lines, city engineer stood up the planning commission and also indicated that. They, there is capacity for this project. In addition, this project is connecting through to um making an extension, we're working with the city right now on a. Upsizing agreement to bring the water line up Effie with this project, that would actually loop the system. Through this project and through crossroads, cuz right now, crossroads connects down to Kelly Park. This would provide a loop system uh for that whole area, which is the KPI area. And betterment of the water pressure system.
So you're saying that that our engineer, the city engineer, has said that we have the water capacity?
Yeah, correct.
The infrastructure for the water capacity.
Correct.
Is that portable and reclaimed?
Uh, correct, we submitted for all three, uh wastewater, potable water, and reclaimed water, and all three came back with capacity, adequate capacity. Correct. And then I'd like to point out, this this MDP does match exactly. And then I'd like to point out, this MDP does match exactly what the master plan was already approved. It's the same exact plan. There's no, no changes, just more details.
Both were approved in January.
Correct. The master plan was correct.
The first reading, and then, yeah, I saw that.
Correct. Yeah, there's no changes to the plan. It's really just.
A major development plan.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, Rod?
Rod Olson, thirty-one, fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. Three hundred and twenty-six units equates to a hundred and eighteen more students, six hundred and fifty more vehicles. Do our schools, do our portable water, does our reclaimed water, do our streets and sidewalks gonna be able to support this? This is a question we should be asking with every development on the front end. Thank you.
Anybody else?
One thing in particular that you guys keep talking about is capacity when it comes to water, potable, and reclaimed. What exactly do you mean capacity-wise? Because I know Rod Olson kind of made a comment that I didn't think about earlier. The pressure when it comes to you running a sprinkling system is not adequate to get coverage sometimes, I've noticed on my street. So is that kind of playing to what's going per household? Exactly how does that mean, I mean, as far as capacity-wise? Thanks.
Like, if you can answer those questions about the capacity when they come to us about a new development and how we determine capacity for all three?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. Valim Simonovsky, City Engineer. We looked at this project at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The capacity is there. We have the capacity for portable water. We have for wastewater for the collection, and we have for reclaimed water. Now, the utility lines are not extended right now. We are working with the developer. They will be extending all the utilities, both water, reclaimed water, and wastewater. The sewer pipelines from along Effie Drive, from West Kelly Park Road to Onditch, and then west on Onditch to pretty much the entrance of the development. And then everything will be looped back into the crossroads project. So that's regarding the pipelines that will have to be extended, and this is related to one of the projects that was also presented at the last council meeting. The capacity for wastewater, we currently have eight million gallons approved per the permit. So the capacity is there to take this system into the municipal collection system. The water system, we already have a permit for about sixteen million gallons per day to be withdrawn from the Florida Act for. Right now, we are pumping approximately eleven million gallons a day. So we have about five million gallons in addition to what we're currently pumping.
So will these new developments exceed that five million that we have left? I know I saw the mayor have wrote an article, and I was kind of, and I saw some numbers there.
Not on the portable water, yes. What we're seeing right now is the drought season, right, with the reclaimed water, where, you know, pretty much everybody in central Florida struggles right now with reclaimed water. And we are working on two projects right now. One is already under construction in the northwest, where we have, this is the Northwest Recreation Center, where we have two large ponds, one on the west side of where the fountain is from the amphitheater, and one which is called the northwest at the very end on the northwest corner of the property. So between those two, we have about a hundred million gallons of stored reclaimed water capacity. Those ponds are aligned. Right now, we don't have a pumping system that will take the water out of there and connect it into the ground storage tanks at the northwest reclaimed water plant. The first project started on the north side, which is the northwest section of it, and that we expect to be done probably by the end of the year. And then the next phase will be the other pond. We're gonna have another pumping system that will also connect to the same system coming from these two ponds, including a filtration system at the ground storage tanks. So that way, when we get into a dry season, when we don't have enough water, we're gonna have all the stored water that we take over the summer during the rainy season and after that, and be able to treat this water and put it back into the municipal system that we can send to public access.
So the other concern was also the wastewater. Everything goes down just to Cleveland Street?
That's correct, yes.
And so we have enough capacity there with all these new developments?
Yes, the pipelines there in place have enough capacity to take over the wastewater back into the treatment facility. Yes.
So if I can follow up on that, the reclaimed water, we're saying we do have capacity for that, for any new development, not specific to this one, any new development right now that we've approved. We're saying we have capacity for reclaimed water.
So how everything is typically calculated is the mass balance through the entire year. So we have contracts with Sunshine Water that we take about two point nine million gallons a day, and we have also contract with the City of Altamont that on average can send four point five million gallons a day. So over the year, across the three hundred and sixty-five days, right, we have enough capacity now. The storage becomes a problem in a dry season.
So is it a rolling three sixty-five, or is it a calendar three sixty-five? Is it a fiscal three sixty-five? How are you calculating the capacity?
It's the calendar three sixty-five, from January first till December thirty-first.
So if we approve any project that comes in, a developer comes in and asks if you have capacity today, we're basing it off of last year's numbers?
Correct. We look at the twelve months period.
Okay. And then do we take into account all new developments that we've approved but are not done yet?
Uh, yes.
So all that's added in is a comprehensive approach?
Correct.
So with what was brought up, neighborhoods, I'm getting emails and calls nonstop about, I'm sure we all are, about not getting pressure. People are having to replace their lawns because of having no irrigation or no reclaimed water to their properties. I guess what can you tell me to help reassure them that this isn't a long-term issue, that we're gonna, this is just a drought issue? And that we have capacity while we're still approving three hundred and sixty-five, how many homes? Three hundred and twenty-six new homes?
Correct. To my understanding, this issue is during the last two months that we have a severe drought season, right? And I don't know if the previous years, there was the same issue. Most likely not, unless you guys have a different information on that. So hopefully, by connecting this system that I said from the northwest recreation complex to the northwest reclaimed water plant, we're gonna have additional water during the drought season, which a lot of other municipalities don't have that luxury.
Well, I guess that's the issue, is I guess last year, we didn't have the storage capacity because we, the Golden Gem retention pond failed. So, and it was my understanding, and I could be wrong on this, but we had to turn away some water from other municipalities that we did have agreements with because we couldn't take on any more water because it was so rainy, and we weren't able to take the average that we would have so that it lasted throughout the drought season. So what are we doing to ensure that we are able to, other than just northwest rec, because we have a hundred million gallons we're gonna add to the system effectively in storage capacity?
Correct.
Do we have a hundred million gallons there currently, or is that just storage available?
I haven't checked what is right now. I believe the pond should be pretty full, but even at that point, even if they're completely full, right? Let's say eighteen millions in the northwest and eighty-two millions in the west. These hundred millions cannot be used right now because there's no pumping system.
I understand. And you're saying, and that should be done by the end of the year?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And I guess, and that's not specific to this project, but we're talking about it. I wanted to bring it up, that residents obviously have been reaching out and very concerned that we're adding so many new homes and saying we have capacity, but then we're telling our current residents, stop watering.
Yes. I believe there's also an issue with some residents using watering laws outside of the defined hours.
Okay.
Pretty much. I think there was like a twenty, over two thousand, maybe twenty-eight hundred that we had on the.
Well, I was gonna do that under my mayor's report, but I'm happy to share that with you. So we had to go back, and we have census, which is our software that picks up when water is being used. And also, four twenty-eight, so just a week ago, on four twenty-eight, which is Monday, which means no water should be used from the reclaimed system, we had twenty-eight hundred eighty-eight users, residential users, that used four million gallons that one day. So the day that we could have been recharging our tanks to take care of Mr. Olson back there, we had twenty-eight hun, two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight users that used four million gallons that one day. The following day, four twenty-nine, which is only for commercial, we had twenty-nine hundred users using four point eight million gallons. So we have a problem, people not, you know, abiding by their watering the days that they're supposed to water. And so it makes it difficult on our folks down at Cleveland to get this, you know, under control when they're not, we've got people out there that are obviously not taking this seriously. We are in a drought, and that you can't use it on Monday and Tuesday, so.
So is this supposed to say that we're blaming our residents for our lack of infrastructure and ability to hold water?
I'm saying they should not, twenty-eight, twenty-nine hundred people are using water when they shouldn't be using it, yes. That's what I'm saying.
Don't we charge a premium, though, during that time?
No.
So that was Monday and Tuesday?
Yeah, so Monday is critical. That's the time when we replenish, especially at northwest, the water supply. And there's some improvements that we already have planned in the next year or two. Of course, it depends on some of the developments, mainly on the Puji as well development, that we have to potentially push another thirty-inch pipeline through that property once that gets developed. Because right now, we have a gap. It stops over at the north side on Rogers Road, and then we have another thirty-inch pretty much over by the pond on Ponkin and Jason Rowley, correct. So once we complete these three thousand feet, that will give us more opportunity to push more water to the north side.
So in your calculations, again, from last year, do we take into account, are we calculating that the Golden Gem Pond is actively being used? Is that part of our formula that's being used? It shouldn't be.
Yeah, well, yes and no, because the pumping system is not there, right? The facility still needs to be completed.
Right.
So even, let's say, that's completely empty. The pond is empty and is available at this point, right? Between the two ponds, let's say everything works fine. We can only put three hundred and fifty million gallons into that, but we can't take anything out at this point, right? So we're working right now with St. John's and DEP on getting that project completed, and that's gonna take another two to three years because of logistics.
But do we take that into account of capacity to serve our residents? Is that in the formula that we say we have three hundred and fifty million gallons to be able to tap into?
That capacity is currently not included in the DEP permit for the water reclamation facility. So only the three ponds at northwest are included, the two ponds at north shore, and whatever we have available at wastewater treatment plant on Cleveland.
And what's that total capacity, then, if you can walk me through that? I know you've said it before, and I just didn't write it down. So what's north shore approximate capacity?
Total, it's roughly about two hundred million gallons in northwest, twenty million gallons.
You're saying two hundred million at northwest?
Two hundred, yes.
I thought it was only.
Well, it's only this hundred, the other hundred, which is where the fountain is. It's a mixed reclaimed water and stormwater. So that we cannot use for public access. They can be used only for watering, irrigating the facility at the park.
Is that part of our calculation, too, of capacity for new development?
That is currently, I believe, in the permit.
Okay, so that's skewing some numbers. There are a hundred million gallons because we can't actually pump that to our residents?
It can be sent to public access, correct.
Okay, because that's what, the number is just, it seems like we're a little askew here, and I'm trying to figure out where we're getting off, and that seems like it's one of them. Okay, so we have a hundred million available to the residents, another hundred million only available to us effectively. What's at north shore, then?
North shore, I believe, twenty million, two ponds of ten million, and there's sixteen million at Snowden, which is the wastewater treatment plant. There are two separate ponds, eight million each.
Okay, so approximately a hundred and thirty-six million gallons of capacity we currently have for residents to be able to tap into. I'm not gonna include the hundred million that they don't.
That's only the storage, right?
Correct. Depending on what, I understand, okay. Yeah, again, I'm just trying to understand, and again, it's not specific to this project, but it is important since residents are showing concern on that. So thank you for walking me through that. I appreciate that.
All right, anybody else? Public? All right, not close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve.
Rod has a question. Excuse me, Mr. Olson has a question.
Rod Olson, thirty-one, fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. Nearly every day, I live in Rock Springs Ridge, thirteen hundred and twenty homes, you can find water running. And part of the reason for people doing it, like it or not, is because when they water when they're supposed to, there's no pressure. I used to run mine between five and seven. Guess what? My last cycle at seven is supposed to be at fifteen feet. I'm getting two or three feet. So I move it back. I do it three to five. Now I move it back to two to four. I still have pressure issues, and my neighbors have pressure issues with watering their lawn, so they run it other days. That's the primary reason behind it. Thank you.
All right. Close of public hearing. Look for a motion to approve the major development plan for the Onditch South Development.
I said they have capacity, so more.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Wolf Lake Ranch, Phase Two. Jean?
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Wolf Lake Ranch Phase Two Major Development Plan. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of Ponkin Road and Ponkin Pines Road, twenty-nine point six acres in size. The major development plan comprises of a private residential subdivision with fifty-nine single-family detached units, a typical lot width of eighty feet and living area of two thousand square feet. Access to Phase Two is through Wolf Lake Ranch Phase One, and a secondary access point is shown on Ponkin Pines Road on Phase Two. Phase One and Two will yield a total development of a hundred and twenty units based on the sum of the area of both phases. Portions of Phase One's Lot Fifteen and Track B will be removed from Phase One and added to Phase Two via the plating process that will result in the aforementioned total units. The applicant proposes eight acres of open space that includes buffer and amenitized stormwater ponds in Phase Two as well as passive and active recreation areas constructed under Phase One, such as walking trails, sports fields, playground, and picnic areas. The landscape plan proposes planning of red maples, cedars, sycamore, Japanese blueberries, and live oak trees in the project area. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on April eighth, twenty twenty-five. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the Wolf Lake Ranch Phase Two Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
I have a question for attorney Clifford. This is a, if it's a conflict of interest. I currently have clients on the contract in Wolf Lake Ranch Phase as a real estate broker with my company. So am I allowed to vote on this Phase Two?
The answer is your safe bet is to take care of conflict. I could go through all the analysis, but given the circumstances, the easiest way, you have enough of an issue that you should declare it, not vote, and make sure you fill out the form within fifteen days after this meeting. Sooner is better.
Okay, so I'm declaring not to vote on this due to a conflict of interest.
All right, any other questions for Jean?
I said two quick ones, and I brought this up either, it wasn't yesterday, but a meeting before. The access to the emergency access to the original neighborhood, the original phase, it appears to be locked when you drive by. I don't know if that's okay to be that way, if that's.
It's gated. It's gated, and I believe per fire requirements, it's through what they call. Okay, a Knox box?
Yes. Luke Classen, Appian Engineering, coordinating with the fire department. They have a specific box. They like the Knox box, but that gate, we didn't do a good job of coordinating with the fire department and really explaining the elevation difference there. And so with this Phase Two, they'll be connecting through to the gated entry. We're providing a second emergency access, and that's really gonna be the emergency access for the whole development at the end of the day. Fire doesn't prefer that access. The front one's off Ponkin right now.
So where's the other?
It'll be, we're gonna extend Ponkin Pines Road and pave it with a concrete driveway or asphalt, one of the two. We're coordinating with fire right now on that. It's right on the screen on the left side. It's gated, you see? Right below the red, down, down. Yeah, right there.
So that's an emergency?
That's emergency. That will connect to Ponkin Pines. The one you see. That's emergency, that, that will connect to Ponkin Pines, the one you see on the southern end? I don't know how to do that, but, um, okay.
So there's a main entrance on the southern side in Phase One, that, that'll be the primary-
Correct, it's a gated entrance, it's, so it's a private roads and it's gonna remain private roads. This entrance right here will connect through to Phase One, there's a separate exhibit, um, yeah, kind of, I think we, yeah, you can kind of see it here. Right here where it connects down through to the Phase One area.
Understood, okay.
And this, this is not a new gated access, it's just emergency only to really replace that existing one.
Understood, I thought that was an additional gated access entry on that, so that's exclusively for emergency, uh, responders, things of that nature. Okay, got it. Second question was just, uh, are we, uh, providing any access to Northwest Direct directly from this neighborhood at all?
No, we coordinated with the public staff on that, they, they wanna control the access points. Um, I think they have an access to the north off of Lent Road, but I, I don't think it's a community access point, I think it's just for staff and for, uh, maintenance purposes.
Okay.
So they don't want, uh, uh, the more access points, the lim- it makes it harder for them to control. And so my understanding is they don't want access from the western side of the park. They try to keep most things off Jason Rowley or off Appie.
Okay, even if it was just a walking path, it, not, not actually providing vehicle access, but-
We had asked initially, but I think it's still a kind of a conflict, Orange County Public Schools has the same thing. I think it's just a matter of control of the parks and or the schools, they don't want access points.
Yeah, I bet, I would do-
We would love to do an access point to schools, to the park.
Yeah.
I, I agree, but I can also understand from a safety perspective-
Sure.
The access point, so I, we ask, but when we're told no, we don't fight too hard, it's like, all right, we, we get it.
Okay, understood, thank you.
But I, I like the idea, we would have loved to do it.
Where is the, uh, Todd Park for this one, or do you have a recreation for this phase?
There is, there's multiple recreation points, so they, they'll, because they'll be part of the same community, they'll be able to use what's done in Phase One, there's actually a, um, I, I don't know if you've ever seen videos, but a parkour course, it's like a playground course on the south side, it's really neat for the residents, if you've ever done that, as well as the sitting area, we're looking to do an outdoor movie theater, so there's a little dog park area, so there's multiple different-
Is it inside the Phase One, because when I drive past Ponkin, there's a park or that you could see is visible, it's not behind, inside, um, the Wolf Lake Ranch, the first phase, it's outside.
This park, this parkour course is within, um, I'm not sure whether the park will be off Ponkin, okay.
I know what she's talking about.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, but first I'm gonna add, add one more clarification on the access. Um, Tina Demossini with MI Homes, four hundred International Parkway, Suite Four Seventeen, Four Seventy, Lake Mary, Florida. Um, the, when we went through the DRC review, this, um, shows that it is, on, on our plans, it shows it as emergency access only, cuz we knew that they would want, you know, an additional access. When we went through the process, the fire chief asked us to go ahead and design it, um, to be a future someday resident only gate access. He goes, once that road is paved, when we did this phase, we weren't, we didn't control the road, it's owned by the property across the street. And so we couldn't do a full right away, sixty foot right away cross section. Um, so we agreed to design the entrance to where it could become in the future a resident only access. Then when Phase Three comes in, which you've seen the rezoning on, which was the Lutz property, um, we're gonna build the road to sixty foot, um, width, and at that point, we can modify this and make it a resident only gate. It will not be for access for guests. But I did wanna make that clarification in case you, it, it comes around and you see it later, okay?
Thank you.
Um, for the parks, in Phase One, we have close to eight acres of, um, open space at the front along the road. We preserve that kind of aesthetic, um, of that area and up in the trees, which is part of Phase One. Um, it's, it's forward of the walls, but it is part of Phase One, there is, we have our, a community park in there with the playgrounds. We did them wood and we tucked them into the trees to where they looked kind of aesthetic and part of the trees. And we also, um, did cow fence along all of the, what looks like horse fence, so that people could have their dogs and their kids and things like that out there in this eight acres of, um, kind of play area. And then we also have a seating area down below.
I'll have to kind of look, because I, e- every time I pass it, I'm like, it's so odd that it's sitting outside of Phase One.
It's in Phase One.
But it's, it's not enclosed, it's just like sitting out there, it's like-
Um, if you go down the cul-de-sac at the end of Phase One, um, there's pedestrian walkway that goes through there and it goes to the, um, the top, kind of the park, the, it's, it's actually a parkour course for kids. And then, it, it also goes down, there's a little seating area, we have a little, um, paver seating area that's tucked up under the, the trees. And then we also have a, uh, pedestrian access way, so that residents of Phase One and future Phase Two can cut quickly and get over to Ponkin Road and get close to the school without having to go out to Ponkin Pines and walk down. So we do have a resident pedestrian gate, so it's all just tucked in there in the woods and it, um, you know, we, uh, kind of designed it to where it was, uh, to, to look like that, so. But the residents in Phase One and Phase Two will have access to each other's amenities. Up in Phase Two, we're gonna do kind of an outdoor kitchen, um, gathering area, we're gonna do, like, uh, Luke mentioned, we're gonna do a outdoor movie theater and some nice stuff, so we're kind of excited about it.
Okay, you're excited, I passed that park and I still can't figure it out, but I'll, I'll have to-
Go in, go in like you're gonna go see the model, go down the cul-de-sac and you can walk down and see all those, those parks, easy access.
Okay.
Just, the people who, the people have the walls in the backyards, they just can't get to them, they have to go out onto the street and go around to get to it.
I'll, I'll have to do that, cuz for me it's safety, because it's kind of odd, Ponkin is a very heavily traveled road and, you know, if someone sends their children out to play by themselves, which they shouldn't, but they do, it's just, you know, it's not safe, for me, I'm always looking for safety.
Yeah, so, um, we do have the gates and they're, you know, on there and, you know, I would assume that parents would be responsible for their children, so. So hopefully that helped, explained how it all works together.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, close this public hearing.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Nose Lane. Um, my purpose is not to drag this out, but to point out at every opportunity and get on the record. This fifty-nine units is twenty-two more students. I'd like to point out, in twenty years, there's only once that Orange County Public Schools said no to a new development and this commission approved it still, that was Hammerick Estates in two thousand nineteen. They, as long as they can put a trailer on campus, they're gonna approve new schools, we look to you to look out for our students and look out for our children. As I pointed out before and I pointed out again, those trailers cost more to operate, they are more expensive to operate and they're not as safe, anytime there's a weather event, guess where those kids go? To the brick and mortar schools, we've got to take this seriously, same thing, question, I'm not gonna beat it to death. This also generates a hundred and eighteen more cars, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Mayor, may, may I respond to his comment?
Sure.
Um, Tina Demossini with MI Homes, um, four hundred International Parkway, Suite Four Seventy, Lake Mary, Florida. Um, we have actually already entered, um, the process to do a, um, concurrency mitigation agreement with Orange County Public Schools. So, um, we've, we've, you know, paid the twenty-five hundred dollar fee, we're working through the agreement, which will require us to prepay our impact fees. Um, prior to plat, they'll, basically as soon as we sign the agreement, they'll give us like ninety days to, um, make a prepayment. And what that does, it allows the school board to start putting the funding towards any necessary improvements. Um, and if you, um, in the attachments to the project, I think we were like point six on school seats, um, as far as deficiency. Um, because they are adding another elementary school nearby and, um, you know, they had the capacity, so in that, for the high school and adjacency, so. Um, but we are entering into the mitigation agreement to prepay our impact fees, which again, it helps the school board get ahead of, where normally they had to stay behind, um, the ball, eight ball, because they couldn't do it until they were over capacity, so anyway, so I, let you know, thank you.
All right, close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the major development plan for the Wolf Lake Ranch Phase Two Development.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now.
I don't know, she abstained.
Abstained.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, so it's, uh, four, four oh with Commissioner Anderson abstaining due to a conflict. All right, next up, annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Lance Sherman.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Blanche Sherman, Finance Director. As stated, we do have the annual financial report for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, uh, from Malden and Jenkins LLC. We have Garrett Marlowe here, the Audit Manager, to give you an oversight, overview of those results. Garrett?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, uh, thank you all for having me. Uh, the partner on the job, Dale Anderson, does send his regards, he was unable to make the meeting today. Um, I'm Garrett Marlowe, I'm Senior Manager with Malden and Jenkins, and I'm the one who's primarily responsible for the day-to-day audit management, um, for the city's audit. And today I'll be giving you a brief presentation. And just to start off with, um, I'll give you some more info about who are your auditors, who is M and J? And then we'll move into the overview of the audit opinions and a little bit more description of the act for, and then we'll move on to our required communications under government auditing standards, and then we'll wrap up if anybody has any questions. So we begin with who are your auditors, Malden and Jenkins is a large southeast regional firm and we serve over seven hundred and twenty-five governmental clients, it's the largest niche in our firm. And then we've also performed in the last year over two hundred and twenty, uh, single audits, of which the city did have one federal and one state single audit in FY twenty-four. And then to move on to the act for itself, the main requirements for financial statements is just the financial, uh, section. And the city does go above and beyond Blanchard and staff for the introductory section as well as the statistics, which is what makes it the annual comprehensive financial report. And the city did receive, uh, the certificate of financial achievement last year and will be applying again this year as well. And then to move on to our audit opinion, uh, we did consider the internal control structure for the purpose of expressing our opinion, um, for the city's financial statements, but we did not provide an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls, that is a negative assurance. Our audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as governmental auditing standards. And our objective is to provide reasonable, not absolute assurance, that the basic financial statements are free of material misstatement. And then at the end of the day, the financial statements are the responsibility of city's management. And I'm happy to report that the city did receive an unmodified, which is a clean opinion, um, on the basic financial statements, which is the highest form of assurance that we can render. And we, uh, they have been presented fairly in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And our responsibility for the audit does not extend beyond the information contained in the act. And then towards the end of the act for, you will see a compliance report. This is what built off early with the negative assurance as far as the city's internal controls and compliance with laws, regulations, et cetera. And the report is not intended to provide an opinion on the internal controls. And this report is a required by governmental auditing standards, and we are happy to report that there were no findings this year, so that would make back-to-back years no findings. And then as mentioned earlier, there were two single audits this year, the city did receive and spend approximately three point one million in federal funds and about one million in state awards. And we did perform one, one, uh, federal single audit, which covered two point six million of those federal awards. And the state single audit covered nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand of that million dollar in state expenditures. And we also did note, no issues throughout our single audit testing. And to elaborate on our required communications, uh, management is, is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. And the significant policies are outlined in more in-depth in Note One of the financial statements. And during the current year, there were no new standards that had a significant impact on the city's financials. And the policies used by the city are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then considering the qualitative aspects of its policies, uh, as far as we're concerned, the city was not engaged in any controversial or emerging issues for which future guidance from GASB is not available. And then there are accounting estimates, um, throughout the financial statements, most notably the net pension liabilities or the, um, OPEV liabilities as well as the estimated useful life of your capital assets, and these are tested throughout our audit process. And then finally, we did receive full cooperation from Blanchard and staff, they did an amazing job getting us everything that we needed to be able to, uh, complete the audit timely. And there were no disagreements, um, with management or, um, related to any accounting issues throughout the process. And at the end of our, uh, audit process, we did receive a written representation from management. And as far as we are, uh, aware, uh, management did not consult with or opinion shop for any other better opinions with other, uh, accounting firms. And there were no significant issues discussed with management. And then lastly, there were audit adjustments, um, they have been posted by management and there were no past adjustments. And the footnote disclosures are integral and we have made sure they are internally consistent from the face of the statements throughout the footnotes. And then our responsibility for the other information in the documents does not extend beyond the information included in our reports. And then lastly, we are independent with, um, the city of Apopka as required by AICPA professional standards. And then our additional, um, report, which Blanch will hand out to you guys after, is our ADNA of our required communications. And it has the summary of the current year findings, which there weren't any, as well as there are some future pronouncements uh, for future GASB standards, nothing that's gonna have significant impact here in the next couple of years, but just to kind of outline what GASB has coming down the pipeline. Thank you all for your time, Dave, anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Garrett?
Just a quick one, thank you for your time and, and, uh, in your presentation. The, and, and you spoke about this or labeled this a few times or discussed it. You're not seeing deep dives in each account or a deep, uh, a deep dive in each, uh, report, it's based on what we're providing to you, you're, you're matching with some things, some certainty, but then a- assuming it's fact and then moving forward, correct?
It depends on an individual account basis, we base everything based off risk and materiality. So if you have any specific accounts that, um, you'd like to discuss, we can definitely discuss and I'll let you know.
But I mean, for this specific report?
Um, for this specific report, we are testing the financial statements, so as far as we are concerned, they're free material misstatement.
Okay, and you're not, but you don't track the custody of money, the, who's, when it's going from one count to another, you're not tracking any of that, you're, again-
We do cash walkthroughs and forms of testing for specific items like that in our audit processes.
But it's not deep dives, it's a normal, consistent audit, it's not a deep dive.
Are you, like, is, where you, when you say deep dive, are you trying to compare to like a forensic audit?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, it's not the same level as a forensic audit, um, because that's more of just a specific item itself. But we do consider cash walkthroughs throughout the basis of our testing.
Okay, and did your company do any forensic auditing at all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Any other questions for Garrett? Okay, um, I just, a couple of things that, just looking at the report, I just wanna bring up here that it's in here, just, but just for the record, um, this is from Malden and Jenkins and it says, "We are required to be an independent of the city and to meet our other ethical responsibilities in accordance with the relevant ethical requirements related to our audit. We believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinions." So, just wanna ask you Garrett, how many times did we meet over the last, since you started the audit process?
Um, for this year?
Yeah.
I believe Dana went with you in the fall, and then, um, we do also contact a member of the council, um, for inquiries throughout the audit process as well.
So that, that means one, right?
Yes, sir.
And you haven't given anybody on this council any, any campaign checks?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, and then the second, um,
What page are you referring?
Quote, that was on number one, this one is on number eighteen.
Okay.
It says, "Management believes an operating reserve equals, equal to three months' operating expenses and transfers out in the general fund should be maintained. At September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, the operating reserve calculates to nineteen million, six hundred and eighty, sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventeen, and the unassigned fund balance exceeds this reserve amount by twenty-two million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two." So is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so I just, I wanna, you know, thank, thank you, I mean, it was, I mean, between our staff and, and your, your staff, you know, we were able to get this thing done in record time and I appreciate, you know, you working hard to do this. And, and I guess as Lance would, would tell you that, you know, unfortunately, we're, we're at the end of our, our three-year agreement and because of the, you know, the state and federal, you know, um, requirements, we have to go back to out audit and you won't be our next auditor, but we, you know, you've been a, a great pleasure to work with, we, we thank you and we have nothing but, but great admiration for, you know, you're, you're thorough in this and, and giving us, you know, uh, a statement that I think we all should be proud of, so thank you.
Interesting, this was not a forensic audit, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody from public which should speak on this one? Okay, if not, look for a motion to approve the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four for Malden and Jenkins LLC.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now.
Thank you, and Mayor, since you mentioned that we do have to go out for an RFP for, uh, selection of new auditors, it does require that we have a board member, council member on that committee. So, uh, you can be thinking about which one of you would like to sit on the committee.
Okay, well, why don't we put that on the agenda for next, the next meeting? Okay, well, won't we put that on the agenda for next, the next meeting? So if you wanna reach out to Blanch, if there's anybody on the council that would like to to be on that committee. I know we asked somebody last time, and they they declined. So, you know, anyway, anybody's welcome to uh to get with Blanch about being on that committee.
Yes.
And so they won't be able to bid on the next process?
Be in the next.
They can't be on.
I'm not, I don't know.
They can't bid?
Some, I have to look at the statutes to see if it says they can't. He wants to know if these audi- auditors can bid on the next R F P, or they can submit a proposal. Yeah.
I thought it was three years and you had to.
No, cuz they had a five-year contract.
Five?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it's been, we'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Okay. Let's see, next up, uh, ordinance number thirty-one oh two.
No, no, you have the one that got pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
So public hearing number five, which is the C D B G grant?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay.
Which was concern agenda item number eleven.
Yes, and according to the rules behind this with Florida Commerce and the C D B G funding, we have to uh present this as a business item, and I do have to make four statements to you. This award is contingent upon the site Pacific Environmental Review approved by the Florida Department of Commerce. The award is contingent upon the sole bidder being approved by the Florida Department of Commerce. The bid amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-nine cents exceeded fifteen percent of the rehab cost of ninety-five thousand, nine fifty. The bid amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-nine cents exceeded the sixty thousand C D B G rehabilitation amount. Staff and Fred Fox Enterprise, who is the grant administrator and the C D B G housing specialist, recommend the contract award to R D C Development in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five eighty-six, ninety-seven, and that includes a ten percent contingency.
Any questions for Blanch?
I have a question. Do we have a description of what's gonna be renovated in the property?
Yes, I, actually, I do. Um, it's, and I will be happy to share that detail with you. It's a lot. And I did share with Commissioner um Nesta because he did ask. Um, but if you like, I will go through everything. This house will include, I gotta take this off. The permitting cost is about fifteen hundred, other material, five hundred and four. W D O inspection, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Masonary work, four hundred and seventy-five thou- four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, point up, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Carpentry, one thousand, one hundred and one. Reframe, one thousand, seven fifty-three, eleven.
This, it's a very extensive list, so what if we table this?
Can I just send you the list?
Because Commissioner Anderson, I think uh some of these numbers will be a little glaring to you as well. Uh, just specifically being in the industry. So I think it's it's definitely worthwhile for everybody to see the same numbers you're reading out. Cuz there's details to everything you're, it's not just that. I think it's very beneficial to know exactly what those numbers are.
So what's your concern?
I just wanna understand the scope.
Okay.
Cuz when I heard W D R, I heard nine hundred and some dollars, and usually that that's not, I just wanna understand the numbers, that's all.
Okay, it's just, again, they have more rehab than others. Yeah.
So wanna table this to the next meeting?
It's probably email all the council, if, I mean, everyone wants a copy of it, description of it.
No problem. Okay, you got a table?
Look for a motion to table little item number five on the business agenda, which is the um C D B G grant addition.
The fifth house.
Yeah, fifth house, yep.
Okay.
Wait a minute, I need a motion.
Uh, some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And we're tabling to when? To next meeting.
Yep, okay.
Next week? Thank you.
Two weeks, yeah.
Next meeting.
Okay, next up. Ordinance number three thousand, one oh two.
Ordinance number three thousand, one hundred and two. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from County A one, Citrus Rural to K P I M U, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use. Assignment of Neighborhood District Overlay for certain real property generally located west of Golden Gem Road, south of Nightshade Grove Lane and Sadler Road, comprising nineteen point seven six acres, more or less, owned by Timothy Birchfield, Robert and Stacy Moss, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number three, one, zero, two, and hold it over for second reading and adoption on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. This includes the approval of the change of zoning from County A one to K P I M U, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, assignment of Neighborhood Overlay District, as well as approval of Golden Gem Estates Master Plan and Major Development Plan. The properties are located west of Golden Gem and south of Nightshade Grove Lane. The applicant is requesting to a change of zoning of the subject properties to be consistent with the surrounding properties, as well as compliant with the city's Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. They were annexed to the City of Apopka on October sixteen, twenty twenty-four, and a future land use amendment from County rural to city mixed use, um, both adopted on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four by ordinance numbers three, zero, seven, three, and three, zero, seven, four, respectively. The master plan, major development plan, details a subdivision plan for sixty-five single-family detached units on nineteen point seven acres. The applicant proposes almost three acres of open space that includes a dog park, walking area, and in the central portion of the subdivision and a seating and gathering space, as well as a trail around the stormwater pond. The master plan, major development plan, shows a connection to Green Shade Grove Lane through the adjacent Gardenia Reserve subdivision, as well as the primary ingress egress on Golden Gem Road. The proposed architectural renderings appear to meet the design standards of the code. Definitive approval is issued once floor planned dimensions are reviewed by staff. The D R C recommends approval of the change of zoning, neighborhood overlay, district assignment, master plan, and major development, development plan. At its meeting on April eighth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the change of zoning, as well as the neighborhood overlay, district assignment, and master and major development plans. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three, one, zero, two, and hold it over for second reading and adoption on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, or soon thereafter. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Alright, any questions for Jean? Anybody from public wish to speak?
About Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, this would require again another twenty-two students. They'll be put in the system, another hundred and thirty vehicles on Golden Gem Road. Thank you.
Albert McCamie, three, six, oh, three, Golden Gem Road. We discussed Golden Gem Road earlier on, and the requirement for impact fees to resolve some of the problems that we're gonna have on Golden Gem Road. I fully appreciate that a lot of people are concerned about traffic density on Golden Gem Road. But what you need to remember is within the other developments that are currently being created, there are internal roads which will allow you to transfer from uh their subdivisions onto either Clemens Rento Road, uh, onto F A and onto Sadler, without actually trans- having to drive at Golden Gem Road. So I urge you Commissioners to take into consideration that we really need to impact fees for the whole of the area, Golden Gem Road, if we're gonna do anything to uh upgrade the road.
Anybody else from public wish to speak? Thank you. Alright, now look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand, one, oh, two, at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So I I I will have to say this, cuz I did mention this at the pre-agenda. When I looked back, this was one that I had voted against back in December. I guess first and second reading, cuz this is from the original ordinance, three, thirty, seventy-three, and thirty, seventy-four.
That's correct.
And and back then, there was a three, two on both of them.
It was an annexation. Sorry, go ahead.
What happened?
It was an annexation and future land use amendment, yeah.
So I had disapproved the annexation.
As well as the future land use amendment, I I think.
I do. And that was because of Golden Gem?
Yes, it was.
And I remember I stated that. So I'm gonna stay consistent with it because um I do have some concerns about the this project, the impact on Golden Gem.
I had a question.
Wanted to make that public.
The the developer to the, the project to the north of this one, same developer, correct?
Yeah, uh, no, it's the same engineer, not the same developer.
Okay. With that intersection, cuz it was Sadler and Golden Gem, there was road improvements, both on Sadler and uh Golden Gem Road. Are they doing similar improvements to Golden Gem Road out front of their project?
Go ahead.
Afternoon, Jeff Summit, Summit Engineering, three, six, six, seven, Simon to place, Lake Mary, Florida. Uh, Commissioner Anderson, to your, to your question, in regards to Golden Gem Road, yes, we were gonna make connections to Nightshade Lane, and that was gonna go through to Sadler, and those improvements with Gardenia Reserve were made. Sadler was actually paved. It was a, it was a dirt road at the time when we did that project. There were turn lane improvements made to Golden Gem Road at that time with that project. With this project, our intent was to work with the city and the design of Golden Gem Road to incorporate the improvements for this in the plans that the city was currently undertaking for for the widening and the improvement of Golden Gem Road. So what we were doing to try to work with city staff here is we had oversight our pond for the development so that we could provide stormwater treatment for that proposed project of the widening of Golden Gem Road. And then we were also stubbing out a storm pipe for the city to connect to at some point in the future when those widening plans were done. In addition, we were also dedicating right away along Golden Gem Road to help with the 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 future widening of Golden Gem at the same time. So as far as the improvements to Golden Gem Road, those kind of got cooked in with the design plan.
So because we're already designing it, if, maybe if we weren't designing it already?
Yeah, we would, we would do the standard, yeah. If we weren't designing it and we didn't have this oppor- opportunity to kind of do this co-op, right, this 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 agreement, we would, we would do it standalone, similar to what you see on the other projects on Golden Gem Road. But the problem with that approach is, and and just real quickly, is the improvements on Golden Gem Road, because they're being driven by the county, because you guys don't control the road, they're not consistent. The county has been completely inconsistent with in regards to what they've required in the past on Golden Gem Road. So going back to the I L A agreement that we talked about earlier, if you guys don't take control of this road, you're really not gonna be able to drive what happens on any improvements that the county does wanna go put in place. So I think, you know, from my perspective, that's why that I L A is so critical for you guys to get done.
Understood. Thank you.
Anybody else from a public wish to speak on this one? If not, close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one oh two at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
So it's four to one with Commissioner Velazquez voting in opposition. Alright, ordinance number thirty-one oh seven?
Mayor, this one we're gonna move to June fourth.
Well, I know, we need to, yeah, still need to.
Ordinance number thirty-one oh seven. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one, seven, one, point, oh, four, four. The here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by P M S one, R E O, L L C, H M F, L L C, Charles P Stallings, Kim L Stallings, Yule E Stallings, Junior, and Crystal Denise Stallings, located on the northwest corner of Andis Road and State Road four, fifty-three, and State Road four, twenty-nine, comprising of a hundred and ninety-nine point four six acres, more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts, and an effective date.
Good afternoon. Bobby Hall, Planning Manager, applicant requested a continuance of this item to the June fourth city council meeting, uh, as Mr. Williams had indicated in the agenda review.
Well, we wanna go ahead and, we need to go ahead and and present it, and it, cuz if there's somebody here, anybody here to to speak on this one? If if not, then we, yeah, we can do that. I just had to give everybody opportunity, couldn't come to the next meeting. Okay, alright, so kind of, well, nobody wanting to speak on this matter, then we like look for a motion to.
I just wanna say one, and I I have to kind of say this. On June fourth, that was the day that I had, or when I had spoken to um our former C A O. So, and I think I mentioned it to our present C A O. I will not be available on that day.
Alright.
Um, I have a commitment that I cannot change, and I will tell everyone it is the graduation of my only granddaughter.
Oh, congratulations.
And I will be in South Florida. It's the same day, same time.
Alright.
So all the years that I've been up here, it is gonna be the first that I have to say that I will not be present on June fourth.
Alright. Uh, looking for motion to continue ordinance number thirty-one oh seven to the June fourth, two thousand twenty-five agenda. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
Okay, can I just take a two-minute break before you start this one? Okay. I just need to go to ladies room.
Or should read the decorum announcement at the beginning. Uh, before calling the meeting to order, he should call it, he should read the decorum at every meeting. Rather than if, if at his discretion and, and. The reasoning I felt was important was that we be consistent. At the beginning of every public reading, we should read the decorum.
Okay, so trying to think Cliff, where do we, how do we?
It should be the chair or slash the mayor because if for some reason. The mayor is not.
Cause everything else in A through D is may, so you want to put a shall.
Just read the decorum statement. I, I think it's being consistent with every.
That would do it.
And then um. Section ten, that was interesting um. Because I didn't realize that if, you know, we had always been with twenty sixteen. But that section also said that during workshops, there would be no public comment session. But we have been doing that, so I, I. I felt that we should just remove that and allow for co- public comment at the workshops. And I wrote this, I wrote, it was interesting to read the original resolution read. Public comment will not be heard during workshop meetings and public comments would be allowed. At the public council meeting following the workshop, but we haven't been following that. Um, workshops and then I wrote workshops don't always precede a scheduled public council meeting. And I wrote, the practice has not been followed and the chair, mayor, eh, slash mayor and commission. Have been allowing public comments during workshop meetings, including budget workshops. Since the chair and the uh, slash mayor and commission have not followed this practice or enforced this protocol. I would respectfully ask this to be updated. Allowing public comments, allowing the public comment session. At the end of the workshop rather than during the workshop, still the three minute limit would apply to each speaker. Because the workshop is really about um, the commission kind of going back and forth and discussing. Whatever the topic is or the issue, so to have public comment in between. Really um, kind of disrupts the discussion, I feel, but at the end, if we allow. Um, our uh, residents constituents to come up, they've had. They've had the opportunity to sit through the entire workshop and then they can come up at the end and kind of. Uh, you know, add their comments, their opinions, whatever they may have a, a question about. Um, they can do that at the end.
That is a discretionary item for your uh, consideration. I will tell you the, the, the pros and cons and suggest an alternative. Instead of a, a shall there, it might be best to have. Uh, it, it may, there may be public comment during workshops at the discretion of the body, which would be you all. And the reason why discretion is important is just exactly what you said. As an example, and it varies from city to city, uh, Maitland likes to do workshops in the middle of the day, like from noon to two. Well, if you had public comment, then effectively the time that body can have the workshop is cut off by however much time. Gets into the public comment and then the workshop doesn't get to accomplish what's, it's gotten to accomplish. But if, for example, the workshop was done where all the internal discussion was done in an hour and you had some time left over on a schedule between twelve and two. Then you could have by discretion of the body open to comment, but to your point. The reason for not having public comment in a workshop is so that you guys can get together and hash out ideas together. But again, it's always okay to have it as a discretionary item, or if you want to have it as mandatory, it's okay too. But it usually is, the, the, the term factor is, is the workshop limited in time? Because if you have an hour set aside, you're gonna probably need that hour and there may not be time for comment there. And that's okay, as long as you're not making any decisions there. There has to be comment before decisions are made.
How about this, what if we did kind of a modern, some, something between the two of you, say. With time, if time allows, public comment is welcome. So you, if you got a two hour block and we spend an hour and forty minutes, then you'd have twenty minutes for public comment, would that?
Well, as long as we allow it, because again, I didn't realize that. In the first resolution that we weren't allowing it, but we have been doing it and so. With this new resolution, I don't want to change it because we've already been allowing it, so I want to.
Well, let me, let me throw out an example of our budget workshops, there's so much that goes on and so much detailed information that goes on. I would hate to wait until five different departments speak and then we only give residents four minutes. To discuss all their questions or concerns of every single department, that's not nearly enough and I. Again, we're doing the work of the people, so I don't want to limit their time either. And I'm against speaking specifically to the budget uh, workshops. For that specific scenario, and I think it's, it depends on the workshop. For that, I, I want to hear, okay, parks comes up and presents. I want to hear from the public, pros and cons, what are you guys thinking, what are you feeling, are we on point, are we not? Then the next department, next department, and I, we need instant feedback to be able to make that decision, whereas if we go through two, three, four hours of workshop. And the residents only have four minutes to respond to all that information, it's, it's, it's not fair, it's not equitable for public participation in that.
Well, he's, what he's saying is that the workshops when we do publicly notice them. We are publicly noticing them from one time to another.
We've gone over many, many times.
So I think what he's saying is that the, if we say at the discretion of the council. Then we can determine it. So that we, we allow it and not extremely like what he currently is doing now.
So what's that wording gonna be then? I think there should, I think there should always be, shall be a public comment section at a workshop regardless of.
Well, we've got, we have to have, uh, by the board, the board would.
But so that's what, so if we have a two hour workshop and that's all the time we dedicated to it and our discussions do go long. And then we get to that two hour mark, then hey, we ran out of time, sorry public, you don't get, you don't get a turn?
We'll decide at that time if we can, to extend it.
I think there should always be a public comment section on work. The discretion of the time limits, things of that nature, I, I don't, we should be limiting, I think it's very. This can be an issue because workshops are very important, especially if we're coming into South Apopka annexation and that. I don't want to on the fly say, uh, we've answered enough and we'll hit it on the, we'll do public comment beginning of the next meeting. Yeah, I think it's important to have it and it should be a shall, not a at our discretion.
Mr. Smith, you've.
It said it's actually welcome at the next meeting.
I mean, it's.
I, I, I agree with what our counselor said, during, during the workshop, you don't want to have interruptions. While we are discussing and debating whatever the items that we're doing. Uh, and I have a problem with public comment at, at the end when we are done. Uh, I think. And Commissioner Nestor's comments, the budget workshop may be an exception. Uh, to that, that the end of a, at the end of a departmental.
Yeah, section, yeah.
Then they allow to.
You could carve out an exception just for budget workshops.
Or Cliff, could they say public comment allowed at workshops at the discretion of the council and leave it up to the council to determine when?
That's what I suggested.
But the problem is with that, what I don't prefer about that is that, do we have input upfront to let the residents know, hey, we are allowing public comment? They don't know that they're gonna have public comment before the meeting happens and that I think is, we need to articulate, you're gonna have a section. At the end of every uh, department to be able to present or to ask for questions, I think that's key.
But I think that's what we said for the.
And what other workshops, I guess, what are there, we don't have many other workshops, so.
There would be a lot of information trying to retain in a budget workshop. After the way along with to the end, so I think at the end of each departmental presentation.
Well, I think same, I mean, thing, South Apopka annexation workshops, I assume we're gonna be having quite a few of those. That, that's a lot of information as well, uh. With different, because we've had it to where each department has come up and presented and I want to make sure that. If there is questions that the fire comes up in, in states kind of where they're at, fire, uh, police. I want to be able to have residents have that same opportunity. It's just a lot of information and, and then to limit two hours of conversation into four minute and comment is my concern.
Well, I'm, I'm more in favor of doing that for the budget.
Cause we have to still make sure we're able to accomplish at the workshop, what we're trying to do.
Alright, so it looks like we've, you know, have quite consensus, but pretty close to consensus on how that.
He's saying if we have um, the annexation workshops.
They would just be.
We, we do have presentations.
By our discretion.
By our discretion.
Yeah, and then for budget.
Budget is, is, we budget, we, okay.
And I understand there's a minimum of two public hearings for the annexation. Public hearings by definition are for public comment, so any workshops would be in addition.
Yeah, that's a different scenario and different beast though, because we've already made kind of the finalized decisions at that point, it's pretty solid at that point. Yes, we can make some adjustments, but at those workshops, that's where we're really fine tuned, uh, what's gonna be in those ordinances, so.
I, I, I don't disagree with you, I'm simply saying that there is absolutely going to be public participation.
I hear you, we're checking the box, I understand the box is checked, I, I hear you on that, I always want to do more than just the bare minimum, so I hear you on that, thank you. So.
Uh, and, and just, you know, I think for me, it was just, it was trying to kind of not mirror Orange County, but in a lot of ways, it's mirroring Orange County, although. Orange County only gives fifteen minutes at the beginning of a meeting and we're giving thirty, so we're, we're doubling the amount of time that Orange County gives.
I, they don't give, they give a lot of time, way more than fif- uh, fifteen minutes.
According to their.
Whether their policy is something else, I, that mean, they spend as much time as necessary for the residents to speak.
Yeah, I, I, I've sat on a planning and zoning board and, you know. Their public comment will go as long as you have a slip in, everyone gets to.
Correct.
Well, when, when I went and there was, I think like twenty individuals that came to address one item. And before the public comment started, the mayor said you would get one minute each.
Yeah.
And there was no question about it.
Yeah, but that's two, two different scenarios we're talking about there, one is we're capping thirty minutes of all public comments, so if you don't. If you're not in, basically that's ten speakers is what is being suggested here, ten total speakers and no more. Whereas Orange County allows as many speakers as are there, they just may reduce the time.
No, sometimes they've, they've actually cut off public comment before in Orange County, I was there when they cut it off before, if it's too many, they'll cut it off.
Well, they reduced, they did.
They could, they've cut it off where we couldn't speak, it was too many people there and they cut it off, we couldn't speak.
I haven't seen them personally do that, so I can't speak specifically to that. But again, did they, but they did, did they have a fifteen minute time limit, thirty minute, do you remember that, like, so that's. Cause we need to be able to apply this consistently. And we do have residents come in especially with, regardless of the issue, so I, I don't prefer ha- at setting any time limit to the amount of. Speakers or time for public comment.
Alright, well, let's open it up for public comment.
Albert became a three six oh three Golden Gem Road, anything that, that detracts from the public's ability to help you guys do your job is never a good thing. You have to sit and look at yourselves in the mirror, there's none of your experts in every particular field. For example, tonight, none of you recognize as a problem on Golden Gem Road with, with dividing it into three areas. If we don't get the opportunity to come up and make you aware of problems. And we don't know what's gonna be discussed in the meetings, how are we ever gonna progress? The mayor has the ability to set the agendas, so if I ask for something to be put on the agenda. It's very rarely likely it's gonna happen. So, you know, if we're limited to a minute or two minutes here. Really, what you're saying is, public's opinion is irrelevant because they're ignorant. And they don't know any more than you do, it's just not true, we're all specialists that are on, on, on areas. We really need to have. Better definition of a word workshop, for me, a workshop is different apparently from what you guys see a workshop. I would like to see maybe more general workshops where you invite the public in without anything on an agenda. Just to have. A conversation about what's happening in the city, how we feel about development, how we feel about annexation. And it should be something that we should be allowed to go back and forth on, for me, that's a workshop. You know, if you guys are just gonna discuss it and at the end throw us a, a minute to have a chat about our feelings. You're never gonna get the best from your city residents, we have a lot to offer the city. Yeah, and we elected you because we believed that you would be there to represent us. You'd be able to, you'd allow us to have our own thoughts and opinions, so that when you're not sure of what's happening. You give us the opportunity to voice our opinion there and then, and as much public comment as we can possibly get is important. If we can't put things on the agenda, let's have open workshops, let's have things where we can discuss things and see if the public come in. If they don't come in, then we know that they're not interested and we're wasting our time. But there seems to be a lot of people who are unhappy about annexation, who are unhappy about. The fact that we're not discussing moratoriums or anything, we really don't get much chance to say what we feel or make a, a, a real impact in what we're doing.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the phone?
Rattles from thirty one fifty six, rolling those lame, ditto Abby. You don't know what it's like, when you're up at, be up there, you can discuss sucking, ask questions until the cows come home. We get four minutes, do you know how hard it is to get what you'd like to say down to four minutes? Anything less than that is unacceptable, the aspect of the one part I did like about it. Is if you speak for a group, you can go up to six minutes, well, I think that might save some time along the way as well. But please look, talk to the people that present, four minutes is a tight time schedule. I'm thirty five seconds in just for that brief piece, thank you.
Anybody else who should speak, okay, close a public hearing and I think Cliff, do you wanna? So I guess we'll go back to section one, what we're gonna change is, it says announcements commencement of meeting. At the start of each meeting, the mayor shall make the following, shall make.
Shall read.
Shall make the following announcements. When, when the mayor calls the meeting to order, okay, so that, that takes care of section one, then section ten.
Well, let's go to section four, let's go in order.
Okay.
Section four, talking about limiting it to thirty minutes. I, I, I think that's completely inappropriate, we're, we're here to work for the residents and listen to them, so. We don't need to be limiting them in that capacity, especially when there's so many issues going on. Thirty minutes is nothing, again, that's, you, you're saying basically no more than ten people. And a city of sixty thousand per meeting. So that, there shouldn't be a time cap to the amount of public comment period we have.
I just think having some certainty there gives us, gives not only the, the residents an opportunity, but also for the people here that. Actually here to do business that they have some certainty as to when uh, the, the agenda items will come to the council.
But we're doing the business of who?
Citizen.
Correct, so we need to be hearing from them. That, that's the most important people we should be hearing from first and foremost, so there doesn't need to be a time limit, there's, there's no reason to that. And if, twenty sixteen dash sixteen, which we're editing, that again was eight years working fine. You didn't apply and chose not to apply the rules of decorum equitably, equitably and equally, you didn't apply. The four minute limit to everybody and, and every resident that come to speak, but some you did, some you didn't, so. How do we know, how do we have confidence in that you will apply the provisions within this resolution if you couldn't do it for twenty sixteen dash sixteen?
I think it's a good, it's a good resolution, I think we can all feel, feel like we've done a, done a really good, a good thing for our. Not only the constituents, but folks that are here to do business with the city.
You, doing a good thing, you're the one that took public comment away from them and made sure that it was silenced. You took the live feed away, made them wait hours, sometimes till the next day to speak to us. And then nonprofits came up to speak, couldn't be heard, wouldn't be able to express, it's free publication for them to make sure. They're the ones helping the community and our community can't hear what they're doing and helping out. So how is this a good, what do you, how is this a good thing in limiting and still restricting what they're doing? You, you created the issue and now you're bringing the resolution as if it's, look at me, I, I'm doing such a good thing for the community. We don't need to be limiting the time, again, that, you're saying ten people max. That, that, that's not appropriate and a city of sixty thousand that's growing rapidly, there should not be a time limit. The one thing that is. Eh, yeah, and there should be no reduction in time to two minutes per speaker, cause again, there's an ambiguity there that's inappropriate. Of if there is lots of speakers, if they choose to do it, great. And donate their time to other residents, but we should not be reducing time, especially after what you've done to them, the abuse you've already. Uh, uh, accosted them with. So we can adjust. Section ten to make sure that budget workshops and we have as much public comment as possible on that. Uh, I, adjust to say shall make all the following announcements, there should not be a time cap to this.
So, so from my understanding, Orange County does have, I think it's a limit to thirty speakers in Orange County, but. At the council discretion, they usually allow if there's more people to speak, but Orange County does is thirty. Thirty.
In one minute, yeah.
Thirty, in one minute, uh huh.
So, I, I think this is a pretty good compromise, it gets, compromise from what?
So I mean, how, how do you feel if you have um. Ten, you know, you have multiple citizens for the same. Issue. Um, do we kind of start reducing?
Whole point of the three and the one, you know, like Emerson Park, perfect example, we had, you know. You, the, the one whoever was leading the charge uh, would be able to give, you know, six minutes. With, you know, with three people there in support of her and, and her position and I mean, anybody. You know, the neighborhoods, which are what we're, what we're talking about, where there's an issue um, with their neighborhood, that gives them the option to give them. A good six minute presentation, which, you know, it's.
I'm okay with that section. To donate time. That's equitable for the residents, should they choose, because it's in their power, it's in their interest. If they want to donate time, they have the opportunity to, and I love that, it puts power back into the people's hands.
So you like that, good, 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 good.
Yeah, I know, I, I mean, it's clear that you don't actually want to hear from the residents though. So that's where I'm fighting for this and advocating, the residents need to come first, they don't need to be time capped and there's so many diverse issues going on. We don't need to be limiting them in that capacity. And we're different than Orange County, we're different than Mount Dora, Oviedo, Sanford. Pick your uh, comparison, we're different, we're unique, we're special, we're, you always pride yourself on saying that we're, we have that small town feel. Limiting them to this is not a small town feel, it doesn't give that, that intrinsic, wow, I'm in a community. I feel heard, I feel respected, this says, we're just checking the box, say what you need to say and get out of here.
Alright, so back to sec- anything else, any other sections, do we get back to section ten?
Well, Mr. Nesta, we don't need to be reducing from three to four minutes either, to every residence come and spoke. Again, do we work for the people or do we work for special interests? All, every resident has said, we need four minutes, we need the time, we don't need to be limited because there are such diverse issues. Uh, Mr. Duran, for years came up and spoke and advocated and needed all four of those minutes and always ran up and over those four minutes. To properly advocate and get positive change in this community, if we limited that gentleman, especially after what he went through. He may not even have been able to speak if we had a cap like this, and additionally, if we had, only gave it three minutes or even one minute, if this goes down to that. He, we might, may not have the change that we do right now, which is a positive change for our residents and our fire department. So there shouldn't be a, a, a reduction of three minutes, no time cap, again, I understand that you guys. That developers maybe complain, but that's okay.
It, it's just not developer, it's just not developers, I, I've never had a developer actually complain, they actually sit on, I, I've never heard a developer complain.
And I believe even if we pass this, this ordinance as it is. And we had the same situation in which Mr. Durant was in, he was still, or she, who would be. With that extenuating circumstance, would still be allowed to, be, because of the situation, so.
But that's inequitably applying the provisions that are in place.
Well, e- either you're gonna allow him to speak or you're not gonna allow him to speak, but I think in that situation, it was appropriate to allow him to express.
I completely agree with you.
And so I don't think.
When, he made the point that. The fact that the public comment was at the beginning, it allowed him to be heard.
Not only at the beginning, but also live streamed, which was taken away.
We've already moved past it already.
It's gonna go to the uh, front of the, of the. Um, count, it's gonna start.
Where does that, is that say that in here, that's gonna be live streamed?
It's not gonna be at the end, it's gonna be at the beginning.
Does it say it's gonna be live streamed?
Yeah, it's gonna be live streamed.
Does it say it in here? Uh, the language is not in there, no. So it doesn't change anything?
We didn't take it out, it just never was in there.
No, but the mayor unilaterally took it out.
Are you requesting that it be put in?
I would love that.
We, just make a request.
Sure, okay, so we'll add.
To be live streamed.
To be live streamed.
And you go put that in section one.
Yep, yep.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay, good, alright, so we got, and then on section ten, just to, just to reiterate, Cliff, have you got some? Language, yes, sir.
On the fly, the answer is no, but I think I, I, if, if you often understand the concept. Uh, of carving out uh, for workshops, uh, for, for budget workshops. A, a, a definite opportunity for public comment. Of whatever the rules are, three minutes or whatever you all end up.
Right.
Then that can be separate from where it says here, uh, to discuss issues themselves of a meeting provided, blah, blah, blah. The public is always welcome to attend, it's welcome to try comments regarding uh, outside of the meeting, public comment. May, and again, this depends on, because this is the debate I give, it is either shall be heard or may be heard.
Maybe heard at the council's discretion.
At budget workshops.
Yeah.
Shall be heard after each department.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, okay, alright, good. Alright, so I think we got a.
So, so everybody's okay with a, a time limit then, you all are in agreement for that?
Yeah, yes.
Wow.
Alright, so looking for a motion to approve resolution. Twenty twenty five dash nineteen.
Hold on, so. So what, what's the point again of this versus twenty six, twenty sixteen dash sixteen? Why, why do you want this instead of that? Mayor?
This is, I think this is a good, good policy that we can all, you know, feel like we've done a, a, a good job for our, our constituents. So I, I think it's a great, it's a great policy.
I think it's always important to look at policies, old policies, out there the policy, look at and see how we can redline and approve, so I think it's always good to look.
So are you gonna be e- equally inequably applying the decorum?
Always have, yeah.
Well, when you laugh at residents.
I don't laugh.
When you shuffle paper while they're speaking, you act like you're asleep, I mean, things like that, is, are you gonna apply it to yourself, us, as well as the residents?
Okay, we've got, I'm looking for a motion, got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
And that's with amendments, right? Changes, okay, I second that.
Uh, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Nesta in opposition, alright. Let's see, Radley, anything?
Um, just one thing, uh, as I've been getting up to speed in the interim city administrator position, uh, we did go ahead and reach out and appoint. Uh, our recreation manager Cindy Edwards into the interim Parks and Recreation Director position, she's here tonight.
She is.
So she's gonna help take a load off of the Parks and Recreation world, she's been with the city for thirteen plus years. And uh, has a great wealth of institutional knowledge for the city and does great work every day.
Thank you, Cindy.
So, eh, my question is, is this interim or is it gonna be permanent?
It's interim, I mean, we have to come back, we'd have to go through the council to do, we can do interims without council approval. We can't do permanents without council approval.
Okay, so um, can I ask when we will make them permanent? Yeah.
Um, I, I, this, this is May, I'm thinking maybe um. Probably a budget year would probably, you know, October first would probably be a good time to, to, to look at both of them, but.
Yeah, cause I mean, they're both doing.
Doing a great job.
Yeah, absolutely.
Both doing the job and when you say interim, it's sort of, are they staying, are they going?
Well, we we wouldn't put either one of them in their positions without full confidence in their ability, so I mean, we. Uh, I think Radley and Cindy are are both have proven their worth to the city and so we'll continue to uh. To support that, so.
Okay, but.
Who who's gonna pick all the load, Cindy's gonna.
Uh, well, we gotta, we gotta figure all that out.
Okay.
Okay, alright, and I I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, you were you were supposed to be after city council reports. Commissioner Nesta, why don't you get started on city council reports?
So we've discussed this before, Mayor, you like to either choose myself or Commissioner Anderson uh in the beginning of council reports. We should implement, and Mr. Williams, I think we should implement some type of kind of rotating order, if you can provide the mayor with. Who who should go next, because you can start with Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Velazquez, Commissioner Anderson and myself, then you switch to the next week. Commissioner Velazquez, Commissioner Anderson, myself and then Commissioner Smith, then Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Nesta, Commissioner Smith, and then. Uh, Commissioner Velazquez, that's the proper way to do this, just to make sure that we're all on the same page here and that. Um, it's fair and equitable, uh, that makes sense, so if we can implement. A strategy like that and and help the mayor out to make sure that it's equitable as we uh. Host these meetings. Mr. Williams, please.
Uh, yeah, I took, I took that down.
Okay, thank you. The other item that I have is uh just a reminder of our office hours or my office hours, excuse me. Every Thursday from eleven AM to one PM here at City Hall. Um, it's been very successful, it's great to have residents pop in, even make appointments, I recommend appointments, thirty minute increments. Within that timeline, it's been very productive and and it's helpful for the residents to have. An open door policy like that and completely understand residents' concerns over resolution thirty-eight-one that passed that. Um, has been used to be weaponized and and intimidate, so. If you need a diff additional spots to meet at or additional times, please not hesitate to reach out, I can meet you wherever, whenever to make sure I accommodate. Um, your comfort level and make sure you're uh being served how you should.
Commissioner Nesta, you brought that up four times and you yet to bring some, anybody forward that said that they couldn't get into City Hall to meet meet with you on Thursday, so I I. I appreciate.
Why would I use people that are fearful and use them specifically?
Give them to Radley Williams.
No, I won't be doing that.
Okay, so it's, so it's not, so it's not really happening, or you you'd you'd bring them forward.
Don't worry, it's coming, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Uh, let me first of all just say thanks to Attorney Shepherd for the presentation on annexation. And I just wanted to make sure that our affiliates and uh clerk will reach out and uh find. Someone that's able to uh do uh the uh. The feasibility study uh that's required so we can move this this process forward. And so hopefully they will have a report they can give back to us at our next meeting, so all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Velazquez.
I just wanted to uh uh mention that. Uh, at the last council meeting when I had brought up Main Street, it was supposed to be on this uh agenda, but I do understand. At the pre-agenda and uh our interim C O did reach out to. Uh, Main Street to let them know that this would be, it was just something with the. Uh, contract with uh our city attorney, but it will be on the next agenda, which is May twenty-first. Am I correct in saying that?
Correct, I'm working with uh Attorney Shepherd to. Make a couple of adjustments on the original draft.
And I appreciate that, that I got the email today regarding Border Lake. As you know, that we've all been receiving emails from the uh. The shopping center, um, Ms. McCrany, so.
Let let me give you the update, I had it under my report file, you brought it up, um, we we got the last of the homeowners, so you. Unfortunately, the way St. John's, it's not the the tenant, if there's a tenant, the tenant can't give us approval, we had all of the the homeowners or all the tenants or homeowners. Had already signed it, but we finally got the last one that today.
Okay.
So I've got, now we're still waiting on Lumen, I know we've we've sent another email, Dodd did, to the Lumen folks, or you know, they've got a a big hierarchy. So the only one we're missing is to to start the the pumping process is Lumen, so.
Okay.
So that, so thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, and um. The question I did ask at the pre-agenda regarding the Station Street. Apartments, uh, the housing there, and that was what, Prestige Premier, what's the, the, um?
Mark Wilkie and his.
Yeah, what's the, the Peacock, Peacock Capital.
Yeah.
Um. According to uh Bobby Howell from the community, he has not heard anything. So I asked, did we commit to it? Is there some way to get out of that contract and put it back out and let someone else kind of bid for that? Um, Station Street? This is gonna be for. Uh, Cliff, uh, our city attorney.
Yeah, I think Cliff will have to review that agreement again.
I I think there there was a time, there was a timeframe in there, I'm I'm almost sure, but I I've talked to Mark Wilkie last. This week, last week, and he said they're full steam ahead, so I don't understand um Bobby Howell, I I'll I'll definitely. You'll get a, you'll get an email from Bobby or or from Radley as to the um. To to the status.
Yeah, Bobby said that they have not come in, that they have, he has, he has not gotten any update from them.
I'll get you an update tomorrow.
Okay, because we definitely need the foot traffic down there, we need for them to start turning dirt down there.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
I know that, well, I tell you what it was, they had some issues, they still were, there were some brownfields that were, they had to get complete. You know, brownfield, you can't build as as our realers on the dice to tell, you can't build when you've got a brownfield still in. Uh, if if it's already, is it, if it's still designated a brownfield, so I know. He was trying to resolve one more brownfield. Which was not the 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 one we were originally had envisioned, it's another one, so. But anyway, you'll get an email tomorrow from 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 somebody about. The status of Peacock Capital, the Fifth Street, or excuse me, the uh Central Avenue apartments.
Okay, and last thing is, once again, to welcome our new deputy chief. Quinn Henry, thank you, you sat throughout first, this is not, you've you've come in, you've sat through some meetings, but officially today. So welcome, and it was a very nice uh swearing in, it was nice to meet your entire family. And uh so welcome, and we look forward to uh. Our next adventure, yeah, thank you, that's it for me.
Alright, Commissioner Anderson?
And I'd also like to echo, welcome deputy, and we were excited, and I know you're excited and just welcome. Um, Radley, uh, appreciate everything you're doing, I see the hard work, um, thanks for the constant communication, um, and I see that you're responding to residents, they are. You know, definitely I'm pleased with that, so thank you, I know you probably just thrown in, but we appreciate what you're doing, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
In addition to that, um, I please, please, my correct email address again is nlanderson@apaca.net. So I know a lot of people are saying they're emailing me, but they're emailing the dispatcher and not emailing me, so. Um, sometimes it takes me two weeks to get the emails, because there's someone else that have my same email, so if I don't respond, it's because I probably didn't receive the email, so please just make sure. You're sending to nlanderson@apaca.net, and as always, I'm always open for any meetings, just please either email or call me and um I look forward to continuing to serve. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, alright, Cliff? Yeah, I just want to bring up the update on CRA.
Yes, I was actually gonna do two things with this report, the first is, I told you I could get you the answer on the um. Uh, auditor.
Yeah.
Uh, selection and the statute that applies is two eighteen point three nine one. And they can, they, the current firm could reapply if there's a determination made that it's time to go through a selection procedure, they could reapply. Um, and if they enter into a contract or anyone enters a contract pursuant to subsection seven of this statute, the renewals are also permitted of the existing contract, so. That's kind of the quick answer to that one, uh, the CR thing, uh, CRA thing came to a not completely unexpected result, but definitely a welcome one. And that is, as I mentioned multiple times, the House and the Senate were grinding the gears against each other. And they, uh, the the last item was one where the House sent a bill over to the Senate. Which basically took all of the priorities that the Senate President wanted and tacked on it all the the essentially elimination of the CRA stuff. And good for us, the Senate President said, yeah, we're not doing that, and so the the bad bill. As well as the good bill died with no action taken, and you may also be aware that no action was taken on a budget either. So there's gonna be a special session to adopt the budget, because the bodies are pretty close, they're only like four or five billion dollars apart. Um, they'll figure it out, uh, but the good news is that gives us some more time, we want to deal, still do, and should still want to do. Uh, the facade grant program as discussed, but because of that happening, which would have been Friday, a week ago from last Friday. We've got some time to kind of make sure we do it right and we don't rush through the process, and so. Uh, I, um, the mayor had asked me to bring this forward for today, but that's before he knew, then I knew at the time. That the bill was going to die, it will, most likely, some version of it will come back in January, so. We, but between now and then, we have time to do the program, adopt it and do it right, and so that will be my goal.
Cool, yeah, it's interesting, you know, the House has set up that, what the property tax um commission to look at, property tax, and so it's uh, it's gonna be an interesting. You know, their their, you know, Senate's looking at more sales tax reductions and House looking at more property tax reductions, and so. Uh, we just gotta be careful because um both will. Could or will affect us.
Oh, it it it's just question which is your poison?
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you, Cliff, appreciate it, alright, so that's legislative update, uh, obviously want to thank uh. Deputy Chief Quinn Henry, uh, it was a great, uh, whole family is here, which is pretty cool, and so glad to have her back home in Apaca. Uh, Art and Foliage Festival was a huge success last weekend, um. Weather could have been maybe five degrees cooler, would have been nice, but still a great, great event, so thanks to the Women's Club for hosting the. Sixty-third annual Art and Foliage Festival. Prayer Breakfast, very, very well attended, thanks everybody who who came out early, early in the morning for that, uh, May first. Not only the Prayer Breakfast at Community Center, but also uh quite a few pastors and. Some constituents there on the steps of City Hall, so thank you all for for being a part of that. Budget workshop dates, I need to see, make sure we're good on budget workshops, they've had to make some adjustments, um. So looking at July twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, tw- and twenty.
We changed it to the seventh, eighth and ninth.
I mean.
Now, you did it seven, eighth and ninth.
Okay, seven, I'm sorry, that's the old one, yeah, 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 okay, seventh day tonight, yes, okay, are, is anybody, everybody good with that?
Yeah, we were good with that.
Okay, alright, okay, um, next up, uh, just this Saturday is Stamp Out Hunger, our post office here at Apaca is gonna be collecting food, so anybody that. Has, you know, uh, non-perishable food that you'd like to donate, and all the, all the food will be going to Loews and Fishes, not. I I know a lot of people got a postcard that says it's going to, you know, Second Harvest Food Bank, it will not, it will be going to our Loews and Fishes, so it will stay right here in our community, so. Anybody that would like to donate, uh, just put it out in your mailbox, uh, either Friday night or early Saturday morning. Uh, they'll be picking up all those, the uh, the the non-perishables and uh. We'll be getting that over to Loews and Fishes, and it's one of their their biggest fundraisers of the year, so please help um our our post office and help um Loews and Fishes in the process. And then last, uh, but not least, I always try to end on a positive note, I got a a letter. From a Phil Philamona Austin, and I assume that. Is that a, I assume it's a girl, uh, sent me a a nice little note, uh, in cursive writing, and so I thought this was kind of cute, on four twenty-nine, twenty-five. Dear Mayor Brian Nelson. A weekend without no internet or electricity would be great. Everyone could could clean up a park or maybe make a community garden. We would be able to do a car wash, maybe we could have a cookout. I think it would be a nice break from. Screens, sincerely, Philamona. Austin, so I thought that was a cute uh. Get rid of your cell phones for a week, so anyway, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, really quick, I know that a few people, uh, residents walked in and didn't know that we probably moved public comment.
Anybody, yeah, anybody like, anybody needs to speak that didn't have a chance before the meeting?
Because I know it was.
Okay, thank you.
I did see him coming.
To the mail and the city commissioners. Robin Howard, ten thirteen thousand Central Avenue here in Apaca. I'm still concerned and about the area. In front of barber shop and I'm working, Mr. Radley is working with me. And it's almost completed, it's almost completed. So whenever it is completed and they start using the walk track. My concern again is whether the police are gonna try to give. Those person who might not be in accordance with what they're supposed, where they're supposed to park in front of the shop in that area. Uh, how much? Uh, or hara, I wouldn't say harassment, but what they expect us to do in parking. Now, uh, I think the city council person that contacted me. But. Pat, uh, Commissioner Alexander Pastor New Hope Baptist Church. I have to go into the left side of the road to get around the funerals. But I don't complain. They got a food giveaway. It's blocking the right side of the road as I come north up to the stop sign, I don't complain. But yet, the same person would tell me my customers have to park in the back. So I want to know what. The adjustment can I look for through the police department if something come up like that.
Well, that, there's your man and and lady here, so I.
So what can we do, though, to accommodate, he's been here nineteen sixty?
Since since nineteen uh. Nineteen sixty-nine.
Right, so what can we do to assist, he's been here longer than most of us have been in the community, so what can we do? Chief, can you come up here too, just so that everyone can hear it properly, thank you.
Well, Chief is coming up, I believe the concern is now what's gonna happen if there is somebody blocking the right of way trail. I would, and I'll leave this to Chief, but I I believe uh they try and locate. The vehicle's owner.
Yeah, we would try to have them move the vehicle, obviously, if they're in your business, we'd ask them to move the vehicle, uh, those trails are for not for motorized vehicles. Um, I don't know, I'll have to look into our ordinance regarding those, or now, so is that a county trail? I don't know what our trail process is, it was minor, so from what I thought I heard was you two were working together to find a solution to his parking problem.
Yes, we provided additional access apron into the property so he can't get vehicles off to the side of the building. And we've removed a tree as well, so I think the concern now is. If somebody parks and blocks portion of the trail, what's the next step? And I think it would be not trying to notify the driver to move up a little bit.
We do not move directly into issuing citations now, with that said. The city could always uh assist him in putting no parking signs there so that you don't have any of your customers parked there and and face that challenge if we had to.
But I don't have any other choice now.
Well, it's my understanding he just said you have.
What what he working with me, but just in case, we trying to put a wrap around that in front, uh, right out, and that would, that would help as well. But like I said, the same scenario or whatever. When they have funeral at New Hope, they block the whole right side of the road.
Well, if we get complaints, we'll respond to the complaints and and we'll address them.
Then when they, when they give out food, they block the whole right side of the road, I I mean, it's in my community, I don't mind it. But by the same scenario, why why should they harass me once the once the trail open?
I'm not saying we're gonna harass you, I'm gonna say we're gonna respond to complaints.
Alright.
That's what we have to do, just like if you wanted to say something about New Hope church blocking the roadway, we would come out and address that complaint. Uh, with what we can do, you know, statute, I mean, we're here to work with you, I want to try to find you a solution, I realize you were put into a bad position. With this trail going in front of your business, and we're not here to, you know, by no means am I gonna tell my police officers to go watch the front of your barber shop and look for somebody parking across the bike trail, however. Whoever parks across the bike trail could be able to expose themselves to liability also, because if somebody runs into the car, hurts themselves. Then your customers could be exposing themselves to some kind of. then your customers could be exposing themselves to some kind of civil liability, because you're not supposed to park there. So it's, it, it's a quagmire, we're here to work with you, I'll work with you with whatever I can, but we would have to respond to complaints.
Do we have enough space between the, the new path and the street itself to install like parallel parking spots?
Uh, no, no, and the, um, I, I think the way the path lays right now, we got access to get two cars on the left side, one, one on the right, and there does look like there's room to do a parallel parking right in front of the building. But, again, I think the concern now is to try and address if somebody is, one of the customers are in the right-of-way. You know, what's the response?
I'll work with my customers, but just in case something happened where person walking out, riding a bike, uh, complain, uh, etc., we'll try to work with them. But the problem is, we're gonna try to do the best we can to get it off the track. If, if he complete what he says that he gonna do.
Well, let's be cognizant of this moving forward and kind of navigate delicately.
Absolutely, yeah, and we're still, we're getting really close, as, uh, Reverend Howard said, we're getting really close to finishing. They do have to come back and do some more work in front of the trail section by his barber shop, um, but we're getting close to getting that thing finished.
Apologize for what you're going through.
Anybody else? Alright, super, meeting adjourned.